There.
Ah, yeah. Well, um, good evening, folks. Uh, we'll start the meeting with the pleasure of allegiance.
I'd like to take an allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the legal public.
Which is again, one nation under one law, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Uh, roll call the Ben.
Commissioner Moore?
Present.
Commissioner Fang?
Present.
Commissioner Takahashi?
Here.
Vice Chair Saxena?
Here.
Chairperson Wayne is absent today.
Uh, we're gonna next move on to the ceremony- ceremonial matters and presentations.
So for this particular item, I have received a communication from Chairperson Wayne, uh, wishes to continue the item until the next meeting when we have a full commission. Uh, so it is, it's up to the commission if you wish to, to, to entertain that, but I think staff recommend would, uh, agree with that as well. I think it's always great to have a full commission on, on site, uh, when you make these decision, decisions, but I'll leave it up to you. Thank you.
Yeah, um, I would concur with that.
Shall we discuss, I guess, the ramifications of moving forward with four, uh, planning commissioners on this item?
You certainly can. Uh, I don't, I don't see any ramifications at this point. I mean, last, uh, the, the code indicates that you, uh, can't be in the position for a year. Uh, last time you were, um, I believe we did this exercise in February last year, so we're a whole month away from, from your one year being up. Um, and, um, council is due to review the appointment of ERC, um, representative in February. So, again, that's still about a month away. So, I, that's why I, I think staff will be in support of that as well, 'cause I don't see a, a reason not to. There's no real delay for anything that we're doing, but again, leave it up to you.
I would be supportive of the staff's thing.
I agree, we would want to have our chair present for this vote.
I'll only point out that, uh, we are, we follow Robert's Rules of Order, and actually, we'd call for a coin toss in the event of a tie.
Wow.
I think that's getting into another topic, which is that we're changing from Robert's Rules, most likely.
Are we?
All, all would just, all, all I wanna say is that, um, that there's no real impact to, uh, moving to the next meeting, uh, to, to accommodate for a full commission being here and making that decision. There's a lot of appointments and elections involved. It's, it's always nice and it's a new year, showing the public how we conduct business here. I don't, again, I don't think it delays anything, right? If, if, if it delays anything in particular, then obviously, I think we'll have to think about that a little bit, but in this case, it, it really doesn't. Even if we move to February, we'll still be okay right now, so.
I think that out of respect for our chair, we'd like to have him present.
I don't necessarily agree, but, um, I'm willing to, to accommodate. However, I think it's probably worthwhile to at least have some discussion. Um, not necessarily fill the positions, um, wait for the chair to fill those positions, but, um, entertaining some discussions with regard to, I guess, you know, last time, it was a little, um, not following, um, protocol, if you will, in terms of the last election. Uh, I believe Chair Saxena, after that discussion, immediately nominated, um, Chair Wong, um, without any discussion, uh, without him, or any, any element of whether or not he even wanted the, to be the chair, and I found that to be, again, um, inappropriate. Um, so, I guess, from that perspective, I'm just, um, wanting to perhaps discuss what the, uh, protocol is now that it's kind of been upended, if you will, right? So, um, if we followed protocol, we would nominate Chair, uh, Vice Chair Saxena for the position of chair. Um, and then the next, I don't know who we would go with for, for Vice Chair. Um, but is that the intent of, um, the other commissioners to, to follow protocol at this point in time, or to, um, essentially start over?
Uh, I have a question for staff and the legal counsel. Um, is the protocol, uh, defined anywhere in our code or our requirements?
That's, that's suspended practice, and as you've seen from the last, um, city council meeting, um, that practice has, has, uh, changed course. But to, to answer Commissioner Takahashi's question about who will be next, I believe Commissioner Takahashi, you would be the, have the next seniority on this particular commission.
Thank you. Uh, so, uh, Commissioner, do you want to talk something more about the protocol?
Well, I just wanted to get other people's opinions in terms of what, what their thoughts are, in terms of, I mean, I've already stated that I'm willing to wait for, for Chair, um, to be present, which, for the most part, dictates the outcome, but I, I would, I guess, like the, um, to be granted, um, at least the courtesy of, of that discussion, such that, as we go into that meeting, um, kind of know what's been predestined with regard to who the chair's going to be.
Well, I actually, uh, haven't really given it a deep thought, uh, as yet, so that's where I am.
So, are you, though, again, one course of action would be that, that, that we would nominate you as the chair, since you're the Vice Chair currently. Um, and that has, um, and that, and that could very well easily be the, the easiest course of action. Is that, is that a position you want to, um, partake in?
As I said, I haven't given it a deep thought as yet, so I don't wanna talk about it today.
Okay.
So, my only comment here is that, you know, the charter of this commission, I think the most important thing that the commission can provide is that we have well-defined, uh, responsibilities, that we try to do that in a professional and non-political way, and, uh, you know, I would hope that, uh, that that would apply as well to how we, uh, how we select our officers. So, uh, I think that's my little comment there.
Thank you, Chairman Moore. Chairman Moore, do you have any thoughts? Oh, sorry, Commissioner Moore?
Uh, no, I, I go back to my original statement, that we'd like to be respectful of our chair and have his input on this matter.
Okay. Um, if there are no further comments, uh, we'll defer this to the next meeting when we have a full call.
Actually, I, so I have one other comment. In past years, I think that, uh, you see this in the commissioner interviews as well, that there's normally a, um, a tracker of attendance, and I would ask that you include that when we, if this is continued, to be continued, uh, that you continue, that you, uh, have an attendance record for the last year.
Uh, staff, do you have any thoughts or comments?
I've expressed my thoughts and comments earlier. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, we'll then move on to the next item, approval of minutes. Subject is the draft minutes of November 12, two thousand nineteen. It was postponed from the December 10, two thousand nineteen, meeting. Uh, the recommended action is to approve or modify the draft minutes of November 12. Uh, staff, I wanted to confirm that we have enough folks here who can approve that.
We do not tonight, actually, given who was absent from that meeting and who's absent tonight, so we'll have to postpone this till the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Uh, commissioners, any, any further questions on this topic?
Not on this, um, minutes approval, but on the next one, I do have a comment.
Okay.
So, I, actually, my, at the time when we approved those minutes the first time around, the first time around, I think we did that in a partial form, which I think is unusual. Um, and I would, um, I, I would ask that we consider doing this as a, kind of a new approval when there are sufficient people here to, to approve it. The, the particular part in question is that if, I believe you were not here at the last one, so if there was something that, that Commissioner Saxena didn't agree with in the portion that was nominally approved, he ought to have an opportunity to, uh, comment on that. I don't think it's gonna, I don't think there's anything of consequence there.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we'll move on to the next item, number three. Subject, uh, draft minutes of December 10, two thousand nineteen. Uh, the recommended action is to approve or modify the draft minutes of December 10, two thousand nineteen. I wanted to make sure we have enough folks here to approve that.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Um, during, in the re-
I'm going to recuse myself. I think I was not there in that meeting.
Correct.
That's correct.
That's correct.
And then, I actually have a comment. I was not there for the final, we, you know, we tabled that. Uh, we tabled that discussion, and I, unfortunately, had to leave.
Yeah.
Commissioner Takahashi is still laughing about why I had to leave, but.
Uh, could you, could you fill me in?
Oh, yeah, so what we did was, it was a long item. There was a approval, um, the hotel approval was in the midst, so what we did was, we, um, we tabled the discussion of the general plan review, uh, completed the hotel approval, uh, hotel hearing, and then went back and completed it, but I did not stay for that final part.
Okay.
So, I'm not sure that we actually have quorum for that.
I, I do recall that happened. It's not reflected in the minutes, but, um, given that that, uh, occurred, rather than partially approve the minutes tonight, perhaps we should just wait till the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. And let's hope all of us are here next meeting.
Yeah.
So we can get done with these things.
And I will, um, just remind the commission too, is if you know you're gonna be absent in advance, please email Beth. That would be your point of contact. Feel free to CC me as well, if you like, but, thank you.
Thank you. Cool. So, we are gonna, uh, now gonna move on to the next item, which is oral communications. Uh, this portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the commission on any matter not on the agenda. Uh, speakers are limited to three minutes. In most cases, state law will prohibit the commission from making any decision with respect to a matter not on the agenda. Um, if you want to come and speak, uh, please fill out the blue forms and pass it on there.
Where's Jennifer?
Uh, good. Uh, interesting that we don't have any oral communication today. Uh, slow start of the year, I guess.
I will confirm we have no cards for, uh, oral communication today.
Yeah. Uh, all right, so we are now going to move on to the written communication. Uh, do we have any written communications which the commission needs to be aware of?
No, we do not.
All right. Uh, this is, the next item now is consent calendar. Uh, unless there are separate discussions on our actions requested by the council, staff, or member of the public, it is requested that items under the consent calendar be acted on simultaneously.
We do not have any consent items.
Thank you. Uh, now we're gonna move on to the public hearing sections of this meeting. Uh, we're going to agenda item four. The subject is municipal code amendments to regulate short-term rental activity in the city. A new chapter 5.08, short-term rental activity, is proposed, and amendments are proposed to chapter 3.12, transient occupancy tax, chapter 19.08, definitions, chapter 19.2, administration, chapter 19.20, permitted conditional and excluded use in agriculture and residential zones, and chapter 19.120, home occupations, of the Cupertino municipal code, applicant numbers, MCA 2018-02 applicants, the city of Cupertino, a location citywide. The recommended action, conduct the public hearing and make a recommendation that the city council find that the proposed action is exempt from CEQA, and recommend approval of amending the municipal code by adding chapter 5.08, and amending chapters 3.12, transient occupancy tax, chapter 19.08, definitions, chapter 19.12, administration, and chapter 19.120, home occupations, for the draft resolution. The tentative city council hearing date is February 18, 2020. So, the staff wants to present the report now?
Good evening, Commission. Eric Serrano with the City of Cupertino's Planning Division. Salvi will be presenting tonight on the, uh, short-term rental ordinance. So, a little bit of background on short-term rentals in Cupertino. Currently, there are over four hundred, uh, short-term rentals in the city. Short-term rentals are allowed currently in the city. Um, when this occurs, the property owner or leaseholder must be, uh, in the primary residence, it must be onsite during the use. They're required, or they're limited to two guests, and all transient rentals must be incidental use, so not just for short-term rentals. All short-term rentals in the city are required to pay the twelve percent, uh, TOT as part of any booking. So, as part of this project, we did, uh, various outreach efforts. Uh, among them was an online survey where we received over a hundred and forty responses. We held a public outreach meeting, uh, which we had twenty-six participants, where we email, or mailed postcard citywide. Uh, we initially took this to planning commission last year, November twenty eighteen, so year before, uh, where we did receive a, uh, four oh one vote with, uh, Commissioner Paulson at that time, uh, standing. We went to city council for a study session in April, and then there was a, actually, a court case in April that allowed for us to do platform regulations, so we were, been working with them, uh, kinda getting that detailed, um, as part of that, and so that's reflected in the ordinance. And this is all in addition to our standard noticing requirements. So, at the city council's study session, um, multiple topics were discussed, cleaning maximum number of users, short-term rental activities in condos, townhomes, and multifamily uses, I think duplex, triplexes, fourplexes, that kinda stuff, um, concerns about restricting, um, guest activities, so looking at the number of guests, uh, quiet hours, prohibiting commercial activities, concerns regarding parking, so we, we found some ways to regulate that. We've also outlined a, a process for revocation of registration, and again, uh, we've implemented regulation on hosting platforms. So, as part of the ordinance, we've defined a few, a few new, uh, words. So, host, uh, which means a person or, or people who offer their primary, primary residence as SDRs. We have a hosting platform, which is a person or entity that provides a means to rent an SDR. Hosted stay where the host is present, local contact, someone that's locally available to answer any, um, or to deal with any short-term rental issues, what a short-term rental is, to use that's less, a rental less than thirty days, a transient, unhosted stays. So, all, all these things have been defined and, and clarified in the short-term rental ordinance. So, the activity, um, so it is allowed within the primary residence. No ADUs, or ordinance prohibits that, and it's one agreement per night. Now, um, essentially, what that means, you can either have one bedroom or one building, if you will, but you can't have multiple SDR registrations that night. So, if all of us wanted SDR separately, we wouldn't be able to do that, which would just be one, um, one agreement. There's no commercial activities, so no, yeah, no commercial activities, pretty straightforward. Um, we do, uh, hosted stays are unlimited, so when the primary resident is onsite, there is no limit to how many, uh, days that they're available to rent that out. However, when it's unhosted, when they're offsite, it's limited to sixty days. We've, uh, limited the number of guests, guests based off, um, the number of bedrooms, so two per bedroom, or a studio is allowed to have two by itself. We require a guest manual for all short-term rental operators. The manual has information on noise, quiet hours, trash collection, parking, um, parking. Each short-term rental must have the minimum required by zone, so, for instance, a single-family home would have four total, um, and they must designate parking onsite, so at least one, uh, parking space onsite. And the quiet hours are a bit stricter than what's typically, uh, in our ordinance, where we've limited from nine PM to seven AM. So, for, in order for a short-term rental to be registered with the city, they will provide all this information. So, host name and contact information, a property location, site plan, and/or floor plan with SDR location. So, this gets into, if you're doing just a room, you need a floor plan, so we know which room you're, um, uh, renting out. Acknowledgement of compliance with the city requirements, consent to inspections, should there be any issues, local contact, again, that person in case an issue arises, they're, they're meant to respond within sixty minutes of a complaint, proof of primary residency, identification of off-street, off-street parking, so where they're parking onsite. If it's part of a HOA, get that HOA approval. Um, if they're leasing, get the property owner approval. And then for renewals, what we're asking for as well is, uh, proof that they're paying the TOT. So, that's part of it. Um, so we've also, as I mentioned, we, we stated our pro, a process for revocation. We worked very closely with our code enforcement division to really get this down, so it's very implementable, um, and a straightforward process. So, a short-term rental, uh, license could be revoked for any of the following reasons. The registration was obtained by false means, the SDR is being, uh, conducted in violation of local or state law, there's two willful violations within the preceding six months, the SDR has caused or will cause serious threat to human health or public safety, or consent to inspection has not been provided. For that process, there's either a notice of pending revocation or suspension issued. So, pending revocation, uh, there's some time built in, thirty days to dispute the ground, the grounds to, before removal, but suspension is immediate. So, if it's really something dangerous happening on that site, there's notice of suspension, stop doing your SDR until you get this figured out, essentially. Um, we do have, uh, they, once that notice is, uh, submitted, they have thirty days to dispute the grounds. Uh, thirty days after the submittal, the decision will be made by the city. There's a built-in process for an appealing of, of that decision, which will be filed within fourteen days. There'll be a hearing after that, within thirty days, by an independent hearing officer who will make the final decision. Now, going into hosting platforms, hosting platforms will be responsible for collecting TOT, as well as maintaining three years' worth of records. The records would include information on all SDR reservations, the payment of the, the TOT, the type of stay, so hosted, unhosted, length of stay, the number of days, and the number of people per reservation. They've also are required to prevent the bookings of non-registered SDRs. So, the idea is that they'll have a unique identification for every short-term rental in the city, and that would be put, put on the website or what have you of that booking, and if it's not there, then they're gonna take it down within five business days. So, enforcement, so currently, our enforcement works with our one, uh, full-time code enforcement officer, uh, who provides enforcement supporting many other areas of the code. Um, so, in order to kind of implement this, we're looking at different enforcement levels. So, we have different approaches, proactive, which is really the intensive approach, and intending to ensure the highest level of registration and compliance, and proactive annual inspections. There's also, excuse me, semi-proactive, which aims to provide, you know, satisfactory registration compliance, uh, rate of known, short-term rental operators, and then there's reactive, which is kind of maintain the status quo, get a complaint, go deal with it. So, there's different approaches to that. We also have other, um, municipal code amendments, and specifically in, uh, chapter nineteen twelve, just clarifying some, some processes in there, uh, in, in terms of permanent application and revocations. In terms of environmental review, um, the project's exempt for CEQA section fifteen three seven eight, where there's no potential for resulting, uh, for the project to result in any physical change in the environment, either directly or indirectly. It's also exempt for fifteen oh ones, fifteen oh six one B three and fifteen three oh four, and it can be seen with no certainty to have no possibility of significant event on the environment, and because the ordinance is a minor alteration to land use limitations. So, next steps, the recommendation from planning commission will be taken to council. We're looking at the effective date of the ordinance on July first, so to give us some, to give everyone kind of, uh, opportunity to come into compliance, and that's it, that's our recommendation. And, uh, so, available for any questions, we also have, um, Philip Willcome with, uh, our senior code enforcement division, or Officer Katie Nomura with the City Manager's Office, and Pugh Gosh with the Planning Division.
Thank you. Uh, do we open for questions right now, or comments right now, for public comments?
Here's an opportunity for the planning commission, if you have any questions for staff. After that, you can open up to public comment, and then bring it back to the commission for deliberations.
Thank you. Uh, commissioners, uh, the agenda is open for discussion. Do we have discussion for staff?
I'm getting a number of points.
Sure.
Uh, so, see, the first question I had, uh, was, uh, there's a declaration that all transient rentals must be in incidental use. Um, so, ju- just for the purpose of the hearing, um, can you, um, can you talk about what an incidental use, how that step defined?
Sure, so, let's take, uh, a single-family home, for instance. The primary use there is the home, living there, so the short-term rental there is the incidental use to the primary. Um, so, that, that's pretty much how it works. It's something, think home offices, sometimes people have daycares, that's an incidental use to the primary use, which is the living quarters.
Yeah. I, I thought maybe, you know, I actually should have checked. I believe that may be clear in the, uh, overall definitions for the municipal code, but it wasn't in the definitions of terms specific to the, um, SDR policy, so, that's probably something that's worth considering, um, considering as an addition. Um, similar to that, is another terminology, there was, in a, a kind of a key part of this, uh, policy was, um, I quoted, uh, maximum number of guests based on number of bedrooms in the, in the SDR. Um, so, there probably, I think there probably needs to be a definitive definition of what a guest is. Um, in particular, um, this comes up, I think this comes up in the comparative, um, chart between the, um, city, city policies, because there's kind of a difference, one of the towns, is Los Gatos perhaps, drew a difference between daytime, you know, people who are staying overnight and people who are not. And I think that, that actually, um, is, um, in looking at the comments of public comments from the, um, study session that was held, and from the, um, online report, I think there's some question about, uh, you know, uh, the number of people that would be drawn to these things, and, and that, I think that it's, it's not an unusual thing. Uh, in the, during the holiday season, uh, my brother-in-law rented a SDR, not in Cupertino, in, in Sunnyvale, rented an SDR, we went to go visit. So, that, that actually, you know, then the question becomes, you know, are we compliant with the number of guests or not compliant?
I see.
Right? So, I think that that's just one of those things where, um, it's valuable for that to be, um, clear.
So, is, is your point there, if there are visitors to the guests, do they count as?
Yes.
Gotcha.
Guests or not.
Or overnight guests, or?
Versus just overnight, who's sleeping there versus who's coming to visit, or maybe having dinner with the, okay, gotcha.
Exactly, and, and I think that, you know, as, as I look at this, the intent of this, I think that, um, that if that were to be overnight, you know, overnight guests, that probably, I think that, that, as it's structured, it's workable. Um, but, but I, yeah, it was Los Gatos, I noted that, um, actually said that it was okay to have one and a half times that number of guests during the day. Again, it seems pretty reasonable, um, but I think just, just so that there's not confusion about that, um, you know, if two people are staying overnight and ten people come to visit, then that's where I think you're, you're most likely to be seeing. I mean, you know, there's not a lot of history of people complaints here, but that's the kind of situation that would, um, lead to that. Uh, on page three, let's see now, probably, uh, page three of the staff report, there's a comment there about not allowing SDR activity in ADUs, and it makes reference to new state ADU legislation, but I don't think that actually applies here. Uh, I looked this up, AB sixty-eight is the, the new, the newest A, um, ADU law, and what that says is, that if you're going to make an application for a, uh, ADU building permit, that you can't, um, you can't do that with the intent of using that ADU unit as a short-term rental. But, it doesn't look to me like there would be any prohibition for pre-existing ADUs to be used as short-term rental. And, and again, I think that there'd be some sensitivity, uh, maybe this has been addressed. You know, I, I feel like some of these issues have been addressed because this has come up a number of times, but when I visited the, I visited the, uh, the session that was held here, uh, the community session that was held here, and there were, I think there were people who were concerned about, um, the restrictions that were being, um, being enacted in this, in this law. So, so I think that just some clarification about whether ADUs, you know, if the council chooses to preclude having short-term rentals in ADUs, period, that's, that's a separate thing, but it isn't, I don't think that that's actually, um, that doesn't follow from AB sixty-eight.
Okay. I'd like to add on. Uh, they, at the most recent Housing Commission meeting, they spoke about, uh, the ADU, um, uh, regulations, and they had listed AB sixty- the ADU regulations, and they had listed AB sixty-eight, AB eight eight one, SB thirteen, AB five eighty-seven, AB six seventy, and AB six seventy-one. So it is possible that one of these other ADU laws has some information about that. But I did also notice that, starting January first of this year, you cannot use an ADU for a short-term rental. That's in, in this document.
Yeah, I believe it allows the city to regulate that, to say specifically whether or not ADUs or SCR should be, I'm not sure it's that specific bill, but in general, there's a bill that allows for the cities to say whether or not they want ADUs to be STRs, so you can just limit it if you like.
So, we'll look into this a little further, I think, for the particular item.
That's a, that's a perfectly discretionary thing. I did actually look at, at a number of, probably four bills that were passed related to ADUs, and the only mention of, of this was, that I saw was in, in...
Sixty-eight.
In, in, yeah, AB sixty-eight. And that was, it's interesting, because if you actually look up short-term rental, you won't find that in anywhere, but, but this was, this was related to approval, you know, granting a streamlined permit approval for ADU. That's, that's where the restriction was. One of the other things, I actually think you had this in the previous, in the previous hearing that came to the planning commission, there was some talk about limiting bookings, you know, I think that that was reasonable and responsive to the public comment. It would be useful, I think, to have a listing, to have a report of how much short-term, you know, transient occupancy tax has been collected, which implies how many, how many rentals there's been.
Yeah. Just going back to your previous comment, I guess, the question, it didn't, the way the dialogue went, it sounded like it was different from what I interpreted when I read the staff report, which was that we were prohibiting ADUs to be compliant, versus what you said at the end of the statement was, it allows, the, the current state laws allow us to deny the use of ADUs. There, there's a difference there, right? And so which, which, which is it?
That I'll have to double-check.
Okay.
There's a couple of bills I'm, I'm...
Okay.
The more bills I hear, the more I wanna double-check.
Yeah, okay, thanks, sorry.
Okay, yeah. So I, I would just, I would ask that, when this goes to the council, I don't think it matters for, for this discussion, but when it goes to the council, it would be interesting to report on the number of bookings, the number of bookings and the number of people that have been, I believe that was provided in that previous, at least the, I think it was the number of, the number of transactions.
I think we had the TOT.
The total dollars?
Yeah, I think we had that, but I can double-check that, we, we can look into that.
Okay, yeah.
Can you remind me what the line of thought was on that?
Oh, the line of, the line of thought about that was, well, it's very interesting. There was an article in the Mountain View, they have a local newspaper, and they actually reported that the compliance, they, they're ahead of us in having a short-term rental regulation, and they have very, very poor compliance. So, I think it's one in fifteen, one in fifteen or one in fourteen, have actually applied for a permit and pay in, they, you know, they have to pay a business license, and then, and then they actually remit them dollars rather than, than the platform collecting them. And that's actually an implication in the Expedia letter as well.
Yes, it is, that's, that was one of my questions.
Yeah, that, and so I think there were a number of issues in the Expedia letter, where they were, they were kind of saying, you know, I think the model that was brought forth here was, and, and this was with Airbnb, admittedly, maybe their policy is different, that what was going to happen was, that they were going to hold those dollars, twelve percent of the booking, and remit that to the city. Now, Expedia sounds like they weren't expecting to do that, that there was a responsibility for the operator, you know, the homeowner here in this case, to remit those dollars. And, and in that case, in Mountain View, and again, that article was not clear whether they were talking about services which were not Airbnb, but the compliance was very, very poor.
I do think we need to look at the Expedia letter on page two with regards to Prop two eighteen, and whether or not we genuinely have some exposure because of that.
Yeah. Yeah, I would agree, I, I think that...
I think this is a question for our attorney.
So yes, we did look into this, the question. The question is whether a requirement that a hosting platform like Airbnb, Airbnb or Expedia, collect the TOT from the people who host rentals on their platform, is in itself a tax that has to follow the procedures for approval under Prop two eighteen, including a vote. And in researching that, we found no, no merit to that argument, so we, we don't believe there's a risk there.
And, do you have some idea of how many air, Expedia transient occupancy, or actually short-term rentals that we have in the city? Do you have some number about that?
It was maybe a handful, it's mainly Airbnb, that's the bigger percentage, like ninety-five percent of short-term rentals are Airbnb, and then Expedia and some other groups are five percent. So, part of this, when we're looking into compliance, is we're gonna, we want to contract with a third-party vendor, called host compliance, and host compliance helps track throughout the various platforms. So, Airbnb are the one, is the one that everybody knows about, but there's hundreds of other kinds. And so, Expedia is a very small amount, and they, they even told us, there's not a lot in Cupertino that they're doing right now.
Yeah, I think, one of the things, they raise a concern, there's an administrative issue, I think, about compliance, and that's something that's raised in the Expedia letter as well, that, that they were raising the concern that they were being made responsible for compliance. You know, I, I, I would just, I would just, you know, I think it's worthy of analysis to see whether that's something that, you know, whether that has merit or not. And then, one of the other areas that they expressed concern about, which seemed like, you know, could be a problem, was that there is a long administrative time gap in the event that there's a problem. And, you know, how do they handle, you know, do they have to stop booking? I think their, a big part of their concern was that they, they felt that they were, they were, the responsibility is called for the city to report in real-time, the, the status of people who were, you know, conducting short-term rental. And that, you know, you can see there's, there's, in the event that we're a complaint, you know, there's already notice periods, it, it, it looks like it easily can become months while you're deciding that. So, you know, I think just having some clarity on that, since they raised it, if it's not an issue, that's fine, you know, if it is an issue, then, then you might want to have some more wording around, when does that, you know, when does that responsibility kick in? I have a couple others, but I'll let you guys go.
I have a question about the parking requirements. So, when you say off-street parking, what does it mean, like a driveway or a garage?
Yeah, driveway or garage, yeah.
And like, if suppose I typically park my car in a driveway, and the night I'm renting a part on the street, and then create the space, would that still be legal?
Is, is, if you identified that specific space for short-term rental, and that space is available, that's the big thing, yeah.
So you mean to say it has to be assigned, so I can't park there if nobody's renting?
Well, you, you could park there when the SCR is not being used, but if the SCR is being used and they have a vehicle, that space should be made available for that.
Okay, thanks.
On that front though, if, if you do have a driveway, there's nothing stopping you from parking on the street and designating that.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Okay. So I was noticing that Los Gatos limits their short-term rentals to five percent of all the housing stock, and we are right now at about four hundred? Okay, so do you know what percentage that puts us at?
I don't have to talk about it.
Okay.
Twenty-two thousand, I think the, the census normally shows twenty-two thousand dwelling units in Cupertino.
Right, but we're, okay, so are, those dwelling units include apartments and things that would not be available to be used as a short-term rental? So I was trying to decide if we were, if we should use the single-family detached number and add the single-family attached to it, or, you know, like, how do we compare our numbers with theirs? And then, if we don't have that ready tonight, is, can it be ready to give to city council so that they can have a comparison?
Yeah, we can print those numbers.
Okay. And then the other question, we have the table for the different types of enforcement, the proactive, the semi-proactive, and the reactive, and you have a different, you know, cost amount for each one, but without knowing what the benefit we get, you know, so if you increase your registration compliance, I would think you're going to get more income, more tax for the city, right? So if you're going from the level three reactive to the semi-proactive, you know, what expected gain do you have there? And then from semi-proactive to proactive, so it's gonna cost us, you know, roughly a hundred and ten thousand dollars to go from semi-proactive to proactive. Do you anticipate that you would get, you know, that much more in transient occupancy tax to make that worth your, your effort? And so if you don't have those numbers available, then that would be something else to give to city council so that they could make those, make that choice.
We can have that.
Any other commission?
Yeah, so, along those lines, yes, I got the same question in terms of what is the anticipated TOT versus the enforcement cost such that you can make a rational decision as to which makes the most sense? What is the permit fee? What is the annual permit fee in dollars?
It really, it's gonna depend on, on our, on our enforcement, so part of that is looking at how much, how much it would cost in terms to enforce. So depending on that level, we're gonna try to recoup, recoup the cost of enforcement through that fee. So if council decides they want that top-tier...
Strictly on the licensing fee, not on the TOT?
Correct. We, we wanna, well, it's up to them, really. There's different options of, of how they want to recoup the cost. If they want the short-term rental to pay for the proactive enforcement, that full amount, then we would have them, we would calculate that fee based off of that, the four hundred based off of that, or if they want the TOT to offset part of that, that's...
Because at the, at the four hundred, and assuming that's like seven hundred and fifty dollars a, a year, that's what I get, would you get?
Oh, okay.
In other words, if, if you just looked at the three hundred and whatever, and divided by four hundred, three hundred thousand, right?
Three hundred and seventy-six thousand.
So it's actually a bit more, because I just did three hundred.
So, yeah.
You're at nine hundred and forty?
Yeah. So I guess, I have no idea how reasonable that is compared to other municipalities. I think that would be something that would be worthwhile.
So, Katie with the city manager's office?
Hi, Katie Nemora, assistant to the city manager. I just want to add some clarity. I definitely think the comment about seeing what other cities are doing is valid, but as far as TOT received, since most of it is received through the VCA with Airbnb, that is all gonna be received kind of outside of this compliance effort. The kind of compliance that we're looking at here is to help with the other portions of the ordinance, and making sure they're, they're in compliance with those pieces, and kind of how actively and proactively we'll want to pursue that. But as far as the estimated four hundred thousand that we'll get from the VCA with Airbnb, that will come in, that's already coming in.
So, four hundred thousand annually is about the current TOT associated with Airbnb? Okay. So, just a follow-up, so yeah, is, is something near a thousand dollars for an annual fee reasonable? I don't know, I guess depending on, so that means you're gonna have to rent, what is that, what's that one night in the city?
Fifty a night, you have to rent six nights just to, just to cover the fee?
Right.
Seems, seems high, seems very, very high.
Right, and again, that's part of the decision, we're not too sure where, where at that level, where we want to be. We also don't know how, how many bad actors there are gonna be, if this is gonna be a monumental, you know, enforcement option, or is everyone just gonna comply, and then we're, we don't really have to worry about this. That, that's why the, that host compliance, that, the web-based company that's helping us monitor these, or ideally would help us monitor these, is gonna help us track all those users, all those...
Right, so Airbnb won't cross-reference an applicant to a, a database of license numbers, for example?
SCR, the Airbnb will look for that application number that they have, and, but will make sure through that...
Right.
Third-party monitoring that they're actually following.
That seems to me that's the easiest, first...
Exactly.
First line of defense, if you will, for compliance.
So again, Airbnb is one of many that, that are out there, so we, we want to be able to have...
Right, so, this is just kind of a pseudo tangent thought, but if Airbnb is the only one that's being compliant with collecting TOT, doesn't that pretty much say Airbnb is your only choice if you're going to have an STR in Cupertino?
You could also remit it individually. So, you can do it through the VCA, which we have a place with Airbnb, but you can do it individually.
Right, but now who's making sure that that's done?
When they apply, that first time, they'll go through the normal process, but the renewal will have them show that they paid that fee, or paid, remitted that TOT to the city.
Okay. And there'll be a record of how many nights were...
Yeah, that's, that's the idea. And the third-party host compliance helps verify that, that information. They, they kind of scour the data and look into it, and like, oh, this one was actually booked thirty nights, and they're saying twenty.
Right.
There's an issue there, and we'd have that information.
Any more comments?
Yeah, so one of the things that happens is you have a estimate of cost for code enforcement, but there wasn't an estimate of the cost for administration of the permits. That actually, I think, given the low number of, you know, of violations where code enforcement was engaged, it was some small number over the last three years, I think that's actually gonna be dwarfed by somebody who's trying to, you know, potentially receive four hundred applications and, you know, mail-out notices and things like that. So I, I suspect that that's something I would, I would, I think you want to identify, maybe that, maybe that just fits into the work that somebody is already doing, but I think you would want to identify that again for the council, so it's clear what the costs of, of the running of the program is.
Right. So, to add some data to that, there were twelve complaints between April of twenty sixteen and December of twenty nineteen, which seems pretty low considering...
Yeah.
Yeah, I was surprised. So, the, the number, the transient occupancy tax number, the four hundred thousand, that's a little surprisingly low. We had discussed when we were talking about the parks plan of possibly redirecting this funding into Parks and Rec. And so, seeing that it's, it's quite low, I think, you know, that could be brought up to city council, that this was something that the planning commission had talked about, but they should probably know what that figure actually is first. And then, with regards to the, with the five percent, is it, it's, it's not on our agenda to come up with a cap, but that might be a suggestion that we want to make, that, that we, you know, look at those numbers and see if we want to, to cap it.
I think that's, Pacific Grove wasn't included on this round, but I think it was on the earlier one, and it's, communities which are highly, you know, visitor-oriented are the ones where, where there's concern about it, kind of running to a very high number. So, you know, here, the concern, you know, the, the people who are renting these would be business visitors, so that, you know, can be a considerable number as well. And then, and then again, I, I would just, with, with deference to the Expedia letter, you know, when we, we're collecting that TOT fund now, and it's kind of going to the general, so I, I continue to worry a little bit about whether, is, is that a general use, is that effectively a general use tax? If it were to be earmarked, you know, in the discussion we'd had, you know, for instance, if they were earmarked to a source, you know, to a, to fund something which was not related to this program, you know, does that become a special, you know, special purpose tax? Again, you know, these are things where if you had to go and have a two-thirds vote to approve it, would be a, you know, be a big deal.
So, to, to be clear, the, the allegation in the Expedia letter is not that the platform is being taxed, it's, it's the entity that's collecting the tax from the host.
Yeah, but I think that their, their argument is that by enacting, enacting a law like this, you are creating a, in this case, a general purpose tax, right? Because there's no restriction on what we spend the TOT dollars on. You know, and their, and their objection is not that they're being taxed, their objection is, you know, if you create a tax, don't, guess, put us in a situation where we're collecting it for you. I think it, it, it just bears, bears technical, and I, I thought that that, you know, given the discussion around general purpose taxes and dedicated taxes in the city over the past couple of years, you know, it's something, something, you know, you want to make sure that we're not, we're not creating a tax. And then, I guess I had one, one other kind of last thing was, the local contact responding in sixty minutes, you know, that, that seems like it would be challenging to comply with. You know, that, that seems like it would be challenging to comply with. Again, you know, as this moves forward, you know, we, we can put a number in, whether it's sixty minutes, you know, three hours, whatever. It's just, you know, in the middle of the night, if there's a problem. I think it would be pretty unrealistic to expect even, you know, any kind of response at all in sixty minutes at, at any time. Now, given for, you know, the intent here is in most of these cases that that person is, the homeowner is on site. So, you know, maybe that, there's an opportunity for that to happen a little quicker, but we should just be at least clear about, you know, the derivation of that number and make sure that it's reasonable.
I'd like to add on to that one because even though the, the number of complaints were really low, it was twelve, there was, it said ninety days average to resolve the complaints. And then there is a staff recommendation that you add code enforcement officers, and it sounds like that's something that you really would need to do if you're going to try to get that fast of a response. Because I don't know if you can get code enforcement in the middle of the night to help you or after hours as it is right now.
Right. And that, and that's part of the, getting that local contact involved, having that, that third-party compliance officer there, or the third-party compliance software, web-based program, uh, vendor. They're, they're to actually field calls, know, like, kind of in the intermediary. So if Commissioner Moore, you have an issue with an S T R next door, you call this number, they call the local contact, local contact handle that right now. And they're meant to call back and tell them, okay, I'm doing this to, to care of it. That's the idea. So that there's a quick thing. And if they're not taking care of it, then we have record that there's an issue and we can code enforcement, code enforce that. So there's a paper trail and it makes it easier for enforcement.
Yeah. Just, just related to that, I would, I would comment that the number is low and that's good. I don't think that this is a widespread problem, but I, I also suspect that when there are problems, it probably has to be pretty serious before you got to the point where you called City Hall. So, you know, it may not be reflective of the, the entire scope.
That is possible that there's a lack of, of information in the community for people to know who even to talk to about this, or whether or not the short-term rentals are even legal at this point and those types of things. So I don't know that the data, is it truly reflective of whether or not there are a number of more complaints and people just thought there was nothing they could do about it? That could be. And was, was there anything that the code enforcement would like to add about how they anticipate this moving forward and what they'd like to see? You have a representative here.
We have senior code enforcement officer Philip Wilkum here. Philip?
Good evening, commissioners. Philip Wilkum, senior code enforcement officer. Go ahead, repeat your question.
Okay. So, well, I was just wondering what, what your impression has been of the short-term rental policy, how it's working currently? And if you've heard of the recommendations that they have from staff, what your opinion is?
Well, currently, as Mr. Serrano indicated, it's all on a reactive basis. As issues are brought to the city's attention, code enforcement responds. So the reason why you see such a low numbers, again, as we are, these issues are brought to our attention, this is when we respond. And I think when, when we're talking about future approaches and responses in terms of enforcement, it's really, again, dependent on the expectation to get all four hundred known S T Rs into compliance relatively quickly. And/or continue to ongoing, to manage those four hundred registrants ongoing is where there's a challenge.
Is, do you have like a recurring complaint that you get from, you know, what most of the complaints look like, something like that?
It's usually, uh, they come in, of course, through obvious problems, public nuisances. Parking is, is a big indicator that tips off that there's probably an issue with an S T R happening. High traffic of guests coming in and out. Noise, especially late at night. And then usually there's, when there's indications that there may be occupants in a garage or in an accessory structure, which is not usual, a lot of those cases turn out to be short-term rentals.
Who would, who would people call if there was, you know, noise at one in the morning coming from what they suspect is a short-term rental?
Uh, right now, the sheriff's office does a great job in handling those complaints, disturbance of the peace, and those are usually handled through the sheriff's office.
And then does that get forwarded to you?
Uh, not usually. For, for general complaints of disturbance of the peace, it's usually sheriff's office does a great job of handling it right then and there. There's really no need for follow-up because, again, that's, that's a penal code criminal issue. It's not something that code enforcement enforces at this time.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any more questions? Thank you. Any more questions for the staff? Cool. I am not going to open the, this topic open for a public comment. I have one blue letter or one blue form. If anybody else wants to speak, please fill it up and sign up. Welcome, Jennifer.
Happy New Year, city, uh, planning commission. Hi, I'm Jennifer Griffin. And I think that was very good that you all had a lot of good questions about short-term rentals. There, I've been to everything the city has sponsored on S T Rs, and I think that it's really good to find out about this. I, I think that it's important that we look at the new legislation that the A D U laws, the governor signed, I think about ten A D U laws in October. And they have the potential to possibly change some of the conversation. We learned at the housing commission meeting that one of the A D Us will allow condos in H O As to be converted into A D Us. There's a question about will that person with the A D U be allowed? Will they have to pay more H O A fees? Can they make that into an A D U? We don't know. My impression is that a lot of the A D U bills have not been really thought out. We're the ones that are having to work the laws out. So we need to take a look at that. Also, you have, I don't know if people realize this, but, you know, last summer, I saw a parade of people with rolling suitcases walking down my street, going somewhere. And that was a bit strange because you saw two people, adults with rolling suitcases coming from somewhere and going somewhere in our neighborhood. Rancho is very large, fifteen hundred homes. And I saw this parade every day and I thought, whoa, that is really strange. But they weren't, it was nice, but they didn't seem to appear to be interested in who was living in the neighborhood. They were going somewhere. I don't know how they got there. They may have taken the bus. But you also have the potential for a constant stream of Ubers and Lyft drivers rotating around the A D Us like it was a, like a hotel. So we need to think about that. I mean, these are some of the, the things. My mother has an A D, she has an Airbnb listing across the street from her. The most recent event was over the holidays, someone had taken the home for a holiday rental for Airbnb. And they brought all of their teenagers and put them in a, they brought up a motorhome and parked it outside of the Airbnb for the night. And had about seven teenagers in, spending the night in the coach while the adults were inside. And the kids were running around throwing things at the neighbors, playing ball, which is not bad, but ten o'clock at night making noise. And, you know, in an area where there's seven widows living there. So these are some of the adventures in Airbnb land. I think it's very important, too. Arinda recently announced that they were not allowing unhosed stays because of the problems with the Arinda. We need to be very careful with the creation of the new A D Us. We don't know who will be living in our neighbors' homes. And it could be one night at a time. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Next we have Lisa, Lisa Ward.
Hello. Happy New Year. So I am afraid I wasn't paying attention when, or I was and I was taking notes on something else. What is, I, I'm curious as to what the rules are, that are being proposed for unhosed places. And Commissioner Moore made a comment about apartments not being able to be used, but I didn't hear that anywhere. Can they, I, be used that way? It's just a question. There was a lot of information, Eric. I wasn't a good student. I, I do know, I recent, very recently stayed, not through Airbnb, but a, definitely, um, this kind of place. And in the, in a town, city that is very popular for vacationing, and they have actually only forty-two legal units. Yet, when you're searching in that city for a place, you come up with like three hundred and eighty units that are available on any given, and they're, you know, they're duplicated on other sites. So you can't add different sites. But in some cases, they're only on one site. So my guess is that there's more than that number. That's a big problem. And I realize enforcement is going to be difficult, but something has to be seri, it has to be taken seriously. Because in my eyes, four hundred seems, well, I don't know. I, I like the idea of limiting to a percentage of the number of actual units that have the potential of being used for this purpose. As Lasgadas says, I, it concerns me that an A D U in itself does not require parking based on all these new laws already passed and going to be passed or going, going to be enacted. I'm happy that parking is a requirement for these rental, short-term stay places, and I think that's imperative to keep there. The, I'm skipping around here. Guests versus visitors of guests, I think, is a huge thing as well. Examples have been given. There was an assumption, I guess, an assumption by Commissioner Fung that most of these places will be for business purposes. I don't think you can assume that. You had a family member yourself that used it for a vacation purpose and you were visitors of theirs. So, you know, we've got Forty-Niners, we've got San Francisco not far away, we've got, you're halfway in between the beach and San Francisco. If you're vacationing and you want to go in both places, it's not a bad place to be. So I think assuming that most of its business is not correct, so please don't assume that. And I'm babbling once again. That wasn't a New Year's resolution not to babble, by the way. Maybe it should have been. Anyway, there were lots of good stuff said, lots of good questions asked, and I know you're not the final decision, so I'll have time to do some homework. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Any more speakers? Any more cards? Thank you. I think now the topic is open for discussion for the commissioners. Do any of the commissioners want to talk or comment anymore beyond what we've already done?
I do have one comment is that if the A D Us are prohibited to be short-term rentals after January first of this year, that we have the potential, if, if people were thinking they were going to buy a home in Cupertino on a large lot, build an A D U using the new housing law and a junior A D U. And use those, rent those out for short-term rental to help pay their mortgage on the main home, that this is basically saying you will not be able to use that funding mechanism. That's going to go away. Do I have that clear?
Yes, they wouldn't be able to use that short-term rental, but they would be able to rent it out as an accessory dwelling unit.
So it benefits the housing shortage for long-term needs. So it is addressing that. So there is that benefit. But if you were hoping to get a hundred and fifty or two hundred percent over the rents that you would get on long-term rentals, that part isn't going to happen.
But, I mean, yeah, there's limitations for that. I don't know how much they're projected to earn from a, an S T R, that's an A D U, but there would be a difference for sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions or comments?
My only comment was that you had laid out a couple of different scenarios for enforcement costs. I actually would probably favor the intermediate, the semi proactive. You know, again, I, I believe that the cost for enforcement will probably, the cost for administration will probably be higher than the cost for enforcement, possibility of that. So I just, you know, encourage you to make sure to identify that, that cost as well.
Thank you.
I actually didn't feel as though there was enough information to make a decision between your highest and, and number two. And so that was something to, to make sure that city council gets so that they have more, more data on it.
Definitely. Commissioner Takashi? So should we go with the recommended action now?
Yeah. I'm not sure the best way we should do this. I think that we identified kind of many issues that need to be, uh, you know, some additional work before it goes to council. So I'm not sure, you know, whether we want to, you know, we, we'd have to make a decision about, you know, for instance, what is the status of, of A D Us as a short-term rental? You know, whether that is only on something that is newly constructed or whether retroactive.
Well, I think with the, probably the bigger question is, do you want short-term rentals in A D Us? I think that, I think that's the, the crux of it.
Right. A, a question independent of that. So whether that's just a correction to the Stafford.
Yeah. I, I think, right, I think it, it could be a correction to the Stafford, but I think that the issue might be whether or not A D Us should have S T Rs or not. And it's kind of commission's decision, do you want to, as Commissioner Moore mentioned, somebody who's intending to buy a home, have an A D U to use as a short-term rental? Or is it to buy a home, make an A D U for a long-term rental? It's, it's something to consider.
Is there any data on the four hundred units that are registered now that, with regard to any of them being A D Us?
No, we don't have that.
A few, Mar.
I mean, I'm happy to, I'm happy to make a, a motion that we, you know, with regard to the resolution, draft resolution before us, and then if we want to tag things on or not tag things on, that's, that's fine.
Doesn't the resolutions, don't we have that already incorporated that you cannot have an A D U be a short-term rental? Okay. And would that also, would the language include a junior A D U?
We don't.
Or do we need to add that?
We can add that. It's not specific to that's, that's A D U, but we can add J A D U if you like.
Okay. So we would have, so it already has the A D U and we want to add the junior A D U onto it, just as it is written up now. So it'll be no longer active, or you're no longer able to have that A D U be an, or junior A D U be a short-term rental starting January first, twenty twenty.
Whenever, when the ordinance is in effect. So the ordinance would be in effect July first.
July first.
July first.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
In, in, in any case, though, I think you were not going to allow more than one, one, per parcel. So this was not an issue of, you know, because you had an A D U and a J A D U that you could rent them both out.
Right. It's always limited to, to one. Right.
Yeah.
Do you want to make a list of amendments we want to start with?
Yeah. If, if we could do that, so.
Before we do the motion, then we can just add the amendment.
Okay.
So, Seth, you have.
Does, Commissioner has, no, I don't have, I have a list, there's a lot of things. So I think, you know, you had a really healthy discussion. We, we hear all your points and things to explore. Before we take it back to, to city council, I'll, I'll let the city attorney's office decide whether this is appropriate action or not. My recommendation is that you follow the step and, and one, you've obviously, the motion will be defined, the proposed action is exempt from sequel. And then two, you can recommend the approval of amended code sections with the items discussed outlined by the planning commission to be further explored by the staff prior to taking a city council. Seth?
That's, that's fine to, to make a motion, basically, you know, approving this recommendation subject to the things we've discussed, as long as you feel that there is consensus or majority, you know, vote on these items and that there isn't disagreement. Because the council wants to be clear about what you're recommending here.
Sure.
And then, and then the alternative to that would be to have you bring it back, I guess. There's a possibility if you.
Yeah. If you have consensus that you want us to bring it back to show you. these items have been addressed to your satisfaction before we take it to City Council, we can do that too, if that's what you want.
I mean, I don't, I don't know how you guys feel. I actually, I don't think I have a problem. I think that, you know, with regard to, I think the big one here is, is whether ADUs can be short-term rental or not. Um, I don't actually have a problem with it either way, but the, it's the cause. It, you know, having clarity in the cause for why that is. You know, if, if, you know, if it is, if the option may exist legally for existing ADUs, pre-existing ADUs to be used as, as short-term rental, then we don't want to have incorrect privilege in the, in the resolution.
All right, so is it worth just a little discussion on the merits and demerits of, of ADUs being, I, I kind of am in your camp with regard to, especially given that we're already limiting it to one per parcel. So, so you're not creating a situation where somebody's got two different sets of guests simultaneously. I imagine, based on the rates I'm seeing here, the long-term rental would be more appealing to a owner of a, it looks to me, I think, in terms of the, the amount of turnover and cleaning you're going to have to do to a short-term rental, the income you're going to generate versus a, a long-term rental. I assume that the legislation that's written by the state is trying to encourage the long-term rental use as a housing element versus the, the short-term. Which I understand, but it seems to me the financial incentive tends to already move in that direction. So what allowing, um, short-term for an ADU would, would just be kind of almost a filler. If you have a vacant, um, secondary dwelling unit, while you're trying to find a tenant, allow some level of income stream, so. It, to me, it's, that's just the, the other side of that.
That, that's not what I've been hearing. I've been hearing that they make a hundred and fifty to two hundred percent on, on the short-term rental versus having the same, same property be a long-term. And I attended.
So can we just vet that out a little bit? So what's, it's got, just for informational reasons, in terms of, um, because I was looking at the rates for, for one, one-bedroom type places, and they're not like astronomical by any means. They're like less than a hundred dollars.
This is, okay, this is from attending the, the, the short-term rental, um, community meeting that we had. I was told, I was told a hundred and fifty percent at that meeting.
Right, so, so I guess I want to understand that.
And then I was, I was also told subsequently, two hundred percent, that it's actually more than that.
So what was, what was the source of that?
Yeah, what, what do we, well, I just, just discuss it. What, what, what does an ADU go for? Does anybody know? Month, per month, like a two-bed, eight-hundred-square-foot ADU, would that be two, three, four thousand a month?
You can, you can look it up, right?
Right.
You know, just go, go search Airbnb also.
No, 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 Airbnb, I'm saying those are, those are in the hundred dollars a night range.
I've seen higher ones, right, and you can rent actually.
I'm just saying, I just looked it up, and maybe all the, the, there's some issue, but I'm just, I'm just trying, I'm not making a case, either way, I'm just trying to get information out, that's all.
So last time when I checked through, checked Expedia, I found a, a home near mine, they were renting out the entire house.
Right, so that's probably a big.
And they had an ADU.
And they were renting that.
And they rented it out too.
Right, so that's now, that's prohibited based on what we're talking about now, right?
If they were monitoring Expedia.
Right.
Right.
Well, it's, it's prohibited.
Right, either way.
So, I mean, I think it's just a different, it's just a different model, right?
Yeah, so, I mean, I'm just, I was trying.
Somebody who's doing STR is probably not doing, you know, there may be people who do this on a professional basis who are doing it with a, you know, many, many days rented per, per month.
Per month, yeah.
But for most people, I think, you know, at least casual ones, it's probably not that case.
So, uh, coming back to the process here, are we comfortable with what the, the city staff proposed? Or do we want to ask them to get it back to us?
Um, comfortable as in we agree that the ADUs will not, not be allowed to be short-term rentals. And perhaps also the junior ADU, um, after July first of this year. And I'd also like to add on something, the five percent cap from Las Gatos for our available housing that, that could be short-term rentals, that if we could add that cap on, I think that would be a good idea. Especially, you know, and I do have another question, is that are these, if an ADU is included in our RENA numbers now, which I believe it is, from the, the Housing Commission meeting, um, last week, what if it is a short-term rental?
I think the reporting goes into that, it looks into how many ADUs were built. It sounds like short-term rentals are a different construction. It's just, just, I mean, the reporting just says ADUs.
Okay, so I, my personal opinion is that if we are trying to use the new housing laws for their intended purpose, I would think it would be long-term rentals. Right, and that we would want to go along with the, with the staff recommendation and not include the ADUs.
The way, the reason why we draft this ordinance, this ordinance with prohibiting ADUs is because of the concern of losing long-term housing stock. As you mentioned, the, the state bills that have been implemented are to encourage ADUs as a means to solve the housing issues. And so those units, if are becoming full-time STRs, then they're not really living up to what the state has envisioned.
Okay, um, I, I don't know if this, if this is a particularly useful data point, but I think it's, it would be interesting to know during the week, what an average weekday hotel rate is in Cupertino. And if you happen to have an average of a comparable-sized, um, short-term rental. If you had, could compare those two, I know the rates go down on the weekends, but a, a weekday rate might be pretty interesting for City Council to hear.
Yeah, from my standpoint, I think that, um, you know, I, my only concern about this, it's, you know, it's a council's discretion about whether to allow ADUs to be short-term rental or not, but, you know, if the justification is, uh, if the justification is because of legislation, I don't think that that's actually the case, so. You know, if that were the case, then, then I would, I would, you know, I would prefer to see that we just are following, you know, compliant with the intention of the law there. You have the existing law. I, I don't know, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a tough call. I don't, I don't know this is necessarily something that's, it's so far off that we want to bring it back. In, in many respects, I think it's just a matter of, there are, there are a number of issues here, which, uh, you know, I think to make a good decision, you need some further information. I think it's sufficient for us to refer most of that to City Council.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Cool. So, um, from a process point of view, uh, what do you recommend? Like, uh, do we have a list of all the stuff discussed that you could?
Can we give you, can we move this forward, but ask that there be, uh, you know, that the staff look into?
Yeah, so what, what we do, we'll have all the, the comments from the commission included in our staff report. If there's a particular recommendation that you'd like to make to the ordinance, so those, some of the items that Commissioner Moore had mentioned, to be included in the motion and, and the recommendation, we can add that, but we would identify the comments that the commissioners brought in, in our staff report.
I, I heard, I heard two particular ones, that's the ADU, the junior ADUs, and also the percentage, um, total cap. Right, those are specific ones that you wish to be added. And there is a variety of other, uh, comments for us to, to explore, so I think previously I had recommended you, one option you can go is you can, you can recommend approval, uh, with these modifications and focus on those two items that I mentioned. Or you can ask us to come back in a month and, and we'll show you what we got, you know? So, but I think we have capable staff here that we, we, we should be able to address those, those concerns.
Yeah, and I think it's going to the City Council anyway, so, uh, they can be served.
That's correct, yes.
Cool, so do we have a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion. I believe that we can encompass everything here by making a motion to approve draft resolution MCA twenty eighteen oh two, which includes a, um, a finding that the proposed action is exempt from SEQA and includes a, a number of modifications and additions to the municipal code. And then, then I would ask that we would do that, uh, maybe we can see consensus here on the items, uh, the items which we raised as issues that should be clarified for the council. You know, those would include, would, would include the, the eligibility of ADUs to be used for short-term rental with the understanding that I believe under AB sixty-eight, a new ADU seeking approval could not, could not qualify if the intent was to use it as a short-term rental.
And the citywide cap?
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm actually opposed to the citywide cap, so.
Yeah, I think, I don't, uh, I guess the, the point here is that there could be some discussion the City Council could have on that.
Yeah, uh, uh, yeah, I think that, so I think that with, with regard to a cap, it, the implementation of the cap is actually quite challenging because, because with the assumption that short-term rentals are not operating every night, then is that five percent of the, you know, at any, at any particular night, or is it five percent? You know, then you would overly limit the pool if you said all people, but, but these people only renting, you know, twenty days in the year. So I, I would actually, I, that's not to say that, that I don't think that there's a, you know, potentially a problem there, but I think this is one that's better over time as you, um, as you roll the, as you roll the rules out and see how people respond, that, that, then you can decide to add a cap if that becomes necessary.
Uh, Commissioner Moore, do you have thoughts on what the, uh, Fung said?
Well, this is get, getting a little confusing because we started a motion, right? And now we're, we're into a discussion around it, and it's gotten a little confusing. You mentioned ADUs, but not the junior ADUs, and, um, we are into a discussion about the five percent cap, which I, you know, strongly support. So.
So, so we'll make, we make the motion, if somebody will second it, then we can, we can discuss before we vote on it.
I think at this point, the motion, the point is that the motion got a little confused, we better make it again.
It's too muddled.
Well.
Okay, so let's just talk about the, the cap. Do we want it to go to the City Council with the recommendation to consider a cap? Or we want the City Council to just discuss it?
Well, you're, you're making a motion to, you're going to amend this resolution. So we're going to amend the draft resolution, we're going to add junior ADUs onto the ADU issue, and then add a five percent cap.
So I think we want to discuss the five percent cap, because there's, there's, to Commissioner Fung's point, we have to define, what is that five percent? Is that any given night? Is that total available pool? What's that against? So, I think you need to define that before we just have a, have a percentage cap.
Okay, so, um, staff provided us with a five percent cap, which Las Gatos utilizes. So how, how does Las Gatos, um, use the five percent cap? How, how is that defined?
If I remember correctly, it's, it's total number, so let's say there's a, a five percent cap, and there's a thousand units, then was it fifty units? They would just issue fifty STR permits overall. Not like, oh, fifty one night, and then there's a hundred total, it's fifty strong. And then that's it, so that's, that's how they would calculate that five percent. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Makes sense, as a, as expressed as a, as a cap on permits, that does make sense.
Yeah.
I just would not support it.
Commissioner Fung, would you support a higher cap?
No, I, I think that, I think that, uh, you know, there were, however many, six, seven cities on that list, there was only one that, only one that imposed a, a permit cap. So I would actually, uh, you know, I think this is one of those, address this in the future if it's a problem, if it's an issue.
So, uh, could we have something that if the number approaches like four percent, we bring it up for review?
Yeah, I, I think that kind of distorts it. If you look at the surrounding cities which do the short-term rentals, you're only looking at the cities which are doing it, and you're ignoring the fact that you have Los Altos, Campbell, Saratoga, and Palo Alto, um, not doing short-term rentals.
But it's a zero percent?
At all, right.
Oh, okay.
Well, not, not regulated.
So it makes it sound as though everyone around us.
They have no policy.
Okay.
Palo Alto, you definitely can get a short-term rental, I mean, that's not.
Okay, but to say, oh, well, to say that everyone's, you know, doing these short-term rentals, and I want to raise the cap or have no cap, you need to take into account that there are cities around us which aren't doing the short-term rentals.
I guess so, but I would actually say for the cities that are, then, you know, there must be a reason that, whether it was a practical reason or whatever, you know, they, they chose not to, uh, limit the number of permits. That, you know, from a cost to the city, because there's a cost to, uh, to, uh, you know, to grant permits and to, to track the administration of them, that it's easy to see how you would want to have, potentially have a, a limit there, but, you know.
I think it, it really is a philosophical question for whether or not you want to have, you know, Cupertino, which is a very expensive place to live, which, you know, the hotel companies are wanting to come in here because they know that they can make a lot of money. Do you want to have these single-family homes parsed out and done as short-term rentals? Or are you going to show your concern about the long-term housing stock shortage that we have in the region?
Yeah, I, I concur with Commissioner Moore. I think we should be focusing on, uh, long-term usage. Five percent is like about three percent above our current rate, so it still gives a lot of room. And having a limit there does send the right message that we essentially want long-term, um, residents, uh, while we want to accommodate some needs, but it can't be, it just can't keep on growing without any bounds. So I would be supportive of that. It is consistent with a lot of discussions we have been having. And five percent of short-term rentals is a pretty high number, even compared to what we have right now. So while you might say, hey, why not revisit it, but I think since we're having this discussion now, and since we are like talking about at least a hundred and fifty percent more growth than what we are now, let's put that cap in there. And we could probably revisit it if we ever hit it, and then see where the state of the city is, rather than other way around, where we revisit it, if it is. We could probably revisit five years down the road and see if five percent is, is bad, and we can have a discussion, but consistent with the, the general spirit of all the discussion we have been having, I think long-term rentals is what we want to support, and I would say, I would be supportive of a five percent cap as a recommendation from the commission.
Yeah, I think that the city sees a revenue opportunity from short-term rentals that it doesn't see with long-term rentals. So the whole idea here, the whole idea of doing this is to capture, that, you know, is to capture that, that revenue in a, in a controllable way. If you believe that short-term rentals, using short-term rentals, you know, the presence of short-term rentals is negative to the housing, then you should just not have this policy at all.
I think it's a question of striking a balance between the needs of different, uh, different, uh, segments. Some people might want it, some people don't. It, it allows, it doesn't limit the economic opportunity that people need, but it's still, as a policy, encourages long-term rentals and short-term rentals. And I, I would be much more supportive of having a cap in place rather than not having a cap in place. Commissioner Takahashi?
I don't really have a strong opinion either way.
Commissioner Fung? We can revisit the cap.
So we could have, we could have an, another motion introduced.
Yeah, I think, I think, yeah, maybe it's the way we move forward is, um, that there's a lot of discussion as to the merits and demerits associated with having a five percent cap, and that City Council discuss and decide.
I would, I would prefer to see the, I think they would be more productive relative to the discussion we've had here, that rather than trying to amend the, uh, the resolution, that we forward that as an item for discussion, just as we have talked about, you know,
Right, the, all the other elements.
And all the other items as well. You know, the, their terminology changes, you know, we don't need to, um, we don't need to make, make a, make an issue there, but they can, you know, they will get the notation that without the five percent cap being something that we pushed forward, that, uh, that that was something that they should consider.
So we can still have a, make a motion which has it and take it to the vote? And see how, see how that goes? We can still do that?
Not have it be part of the vote.
Okay.
So we can, we can still, it's, you can do that. I can make a motion, you know, that we find the proposed actions are exempt from SEQA and amend the municipal code by adding chapters, chapter five point oh eight, and amending chapters three point one two, transient occupancy tax, chapter nineteen point oh eight definitions, chapter nineteen point twelve administration, and chapter nineteen point one two oh home occupations, to include junior ADUs along with the accessory dwelling unit prohibition, and add a five percent cap on the number of permits.
So these are, would be two competing motions. One is that the council consider these items, but not, but you're, you're not actually recommending one or the other. And then your, your motion here is to actually adopt those revisions to the staff-recommended ordinance?
Correct.
Okay. So I, I think that if we're going to make a substantive change to the So I think that if we're going to make a substantive change to the material before us here today, that we probably need to do more research than one city out of the group that did this happened to pick a number.
I think I'm going to second Commissioner Moore's motion, and suggest we take a vote and see if we can be, if we have an agreement.
And so part of that is that we also are carrying forward the comments that were brought here as a clarification.
Yeah, we're just explicitly calling out those two.
All right, and then we, well, we can either, I mean, we've approved this, so we can have a discussion. I'm not sure that JADU is viewed separately from ADUs, so I think that that's probably not required.
A junior ADU is not the same as an ADU, there are different regulations for it, and the new ADU laws explain those.
Yeah, and I think we should have as much clarity as we can, so that there's no scope for misinterpretation in the future, even though the intent might be included. If the intent is to include it, let's call it out.
I think the staff would appreciate some clarity so that there's no interpretation having to be made.
And also, you know, keeping in mind that if we don't cap the short-term rentals, that we are sending a message that we are not concerned about long-term housing in Cupertino.
Yes, I concur.
So, this is silly, because we're getting hung up on, I thought there was some dialogue prior to your motion, Commissioner Moore, of, with regard to the, we'll just call them non-unanimous elements, that we just bring that forward to the city council for debate and discussion.
Their consideration.
Right, their consideration, so they can decide, you know, we're not, we don't have a unanimous recommendation with regard to some of these elements, or we can have that vote, and we'll see where it goes, and if that fails, do we have a second motion along those lines?
Yeah, actually, we're voting on the second motion right now, that we are going to approve these minutes, the notes will be supplied explicitly with the vote that we want the ADU and unit is included, and we have a five percent cap, that's it. And they can of course reject our recommendations, I mean, it doesn't mean that they have to accept.
You didn't need to include those, and they could have considered and done that as well.
I think it's, those are two things that stood out, and you want to make those explicitly stand out as the commission's recommendation, if we agree and vote on it. So.
Well, I'm not commenting on how this might turn out, but.
Finally, the city council will decide, you know, we can just recommend.
That's not what I mean, but.
I'm going to start the vote, okay, thank you.
Oh, you need to press it. Vote finished.
Save vote or?
Yeah, I usually save out.
Save vote?
Yeah.
Okay, so that didn't pass, so now I will make the, I will make the motion once again.
So your motion is still open?
Yes, well, that's right. That we, well, so I'll clarify what I said, that we approve, that we approve MCA twenty eighteen oh two, but include a number of notes to the council.
Per the discussions that we have.
Per the discussion we've had, which are clarifications that we believe they should consider.
Right, which is that.
Can you outline these notes? What are these notes that you're adding on to your motion?
It's everything that was in the record, so that would be, that would include discussion of a, discussion of the status of ADU and JADU, the whether ADUs, pre-existing ADUs can be acceptable for short-term rental or not.
If it's already registered as.
If it's already registered, you know, issues around some of the specific wording in the staff report and in the, you know, definitions, I mean, I can go back and recap all those things, but I think that there have been a number, a long list of recommendations about things where there could be greater clarity that don't impact the overall flavor of this.
Could our attorney comment on what that resolution is going to look like written up?
I believe the commission has passed similar resolutions before, doesn't mean you need to agree to it tonight, but the idea is that the staff recommended ordinance is recommended by the commission, subject to the recommendation that the council discuss the items in the record, which is in the video, and so the video would be reviewed, staff's notes would be analyzed, put into the council staff reports, and the council would consider the recommended ordinance subject to those comments.
Can you estimate how much staff time it's going to take in order to do that?
Sorry, I was looking at how long we've been talking, probably about that long, just to make sure I have all the comments, going through the comments from the meeting, but, I mean, it's the first.
Right, either that or we can try to resummarize what we talked about.
If you resummarize that.
Some of the concerns were somewhat arbitrary percentages being applied, and really trying to understand what is the limit that makes sense with regard to striking that balance between allowing a property owner to generate revenue using an SDR versus somewhat impeding the desire to have a long-term rental, right? And so what should that limit be? Five percent was thrown out because of Los Gatos, why did Los Gatos choose five percent versus any other number? While it's generally, if somebody else has a number, you assume there's some rationale to come up with that number, but it's, there's some merit in understanding it, discussing it, and if that's, and making sure that's the right number. That is where my position is.
May I make another competing motion, since we had the first one die, this one's live, okay, may I make one that, can we have the original sheet up here, which had the, that we find it exempt from SEQA, and, there we go, yep, almost, okay. Try another one.
Sure.
Okay, that the planning commission recommends that the city council adopt the proposed draft ordinance, define the proposed actions are exempt from SEQA, and amend the municipal code by adding chapter five point oh eight, and amending chapters three point one two, chapter nineteen point oh eight, chapter nineteen point one two, and chapter nineteen point one two zero, adding junior ADUs to the accessory dwelling unit requirement.
I'm fine with that. Right, so there's, so in terms of the cap, and that's just discussed at city council as part of.
Yeah, we'll include that in the record.
Okay. Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Second?
All right, sure, I'll second.
Any more discussion on this motion?
And then all of our comments go to city council, great.
I think something happened, oh.
Yeah, we have a motion process for zero. For break, okay. We have a request for a small break, we are going to assemble back in five minutes, which means eight twenty-seven, or let's make it eight thirty.
We are now going to move on to old business, the subject is a study session on the general plan annual review, implementation plan, and consider general plan policies and strategies that could benefit from clarification. The recommended action, provide direction on the format of the general plan annual review, implementation plan, and two, consider general plan policies and strategies that could benefit from clarification. Staff?
Good evening, planning commission, this is a continuation of our past discussions on the general plan annual review and items that the commission believes need clarification in policies and strategies in the general plan. Just as a refresher, a general plan annual update is required by law on an annual basis, it is used to monitor progress and implementation of action items in the general plan, and it also can be used to identify work program items that the city can work on in order to implement those policies and strategies. In addition, just as a reminder, there is also a housing element in the general plan that also requires an annual update, and those are required to be on forms published by the HCV. Just a refresher on the past planning commission direction on the annual review, they included format changes to the previous annual report, which included adding a comment column to add specific comments for each of the action items and policies and strategies, and also to add some form of indicating the status and timeframe on each of those, of the policies and strategies and action items. There was also a past comment regarding verifying comments related to the Valco Shopping District, which, as staff has previously reported, were verified against the minutes from the city council meeting of, I believe it was September third of last year, August, September last year. The last planning commission meeting, there was direction to update certain comments related to development allocations. Just to back up, the planning commission decided to break this up into different chunks so that they can go through it and take it piece by piece. At the last meeting, the commission went over the first eighteen pages, they don't directly translate to eighteen pages in what the attachment that you see today due to changes in comments, et cetera, but the planning commission reviewed through policy LU seventeen, I believe, and LU eighteen, and so the comments from last time were to update the comments related to strategy LU dash one dot two point two, which related to development allocations and development potential in the city, and also to update comments in policy LU dash twelve point one related to hillsides, and to eliminate certain references to a denied general plan authorization application that were there. In addition, the, just as a reminder, the city council at its study session in October eighteenth authorized the planning commission to identify policies that could benefit from clarification, and as a result, the planning commission went through those first eighteen pages and suggested several items for the council to consider either amending in the general plan policies and strategies, or to develop new policies related to those items. These were attached as attachment two of your packet. And with that, I conclude this presentation, happy to take questions and continue to go over the first two attachments to the packet. Happy to take questions and continue to go over the first two attachments to the packet.
Okay, thank you.
Open for comments?
Thank you. So I was watching the video today from September third, and I was a little bit confused because Mayor Scharf had stated for the Valco Shopping District that the new changes that they made were to have three hundred and eighty-nine units, and it could go to six hundred and twenty, I believe. And this, this is saying fifteen hundred units, so I know that there was a comment during that meeting from a single council member to have the fifteen hundred units, and I'm wondering if maybe we want to clarify what was put into the general plan for, for Valco with regards to housing, along with this comment, you know, with the fifteen hundred units, maybe add a little bit more for, for what was allocated?
Certainly, I can speak to that. So the, for the Valco Shopping District, the allocation, the residential allocation is three hundred and eighty-nine units, with the maximum state allowed density bonus of thirty-five percent, assuming that Valco would, that the property owners would allow, would provide a maximum of the eleven percent very low income units in their project, which would be, give or take, I'm gonna say forty units or so, in their project, that they could get a thirty-five density percent density bonus, which will yield about six hundred and twenty units. No, I will back that up. So let me go through that analysis again, I start. So there are three eighty-nine units that are allowed at the Valco Shopping District. Now, that is based on an eighty-five percent realistic capacity of the site. So about thirteen point one acres of that site is zoned at thirty-five dwelling units to the acre. So if you took that thirty, thirteen point one, and you multiplied that by thirty-five, you get a certain number, and I believe it's around the five hundred something, number. And thirty-five percent of that, if you add another thirty-five percent density bonus to that, you will end up with the six hundred and twenty units that were discussed at that meeting. The, the minutes for that night, when we went back and we reviewed the minutes, the adopted minute state, that the City Council directed the city manager to get into certain discussions with potentially the property owner to consider adding more residential to the site, and a number was thrown out of up to fifteen hundred units, including all density bonuses and incentives, et cetera, for the whole site. Any other program, no other programming was discussed, other than the fact that there might be a reduction to the required commercial development on the site in order to facilitate that development.
There was some mention of office, I believe, from, from the mayor as well. My concern is, you know, from a negotiation standpoint, if they're, if they have thrown out a high number, and I've, I've, the rumor mill is, it's out there, has said a different number as well, and even a house, a office number. So my concern is that, is that in our comment section, that we wanna show what actually was put into the general plan here. And, and I'm not saying don't show the fifteen hundred units here, but show what's actually just in the general plan, so people are aware of that. And I, you know, because if, for people who were attending the meeting, I believe they had an expectation that there would, that the city made this decision that there would be a lower number of units, and so when you, when they read this, it might come as a shock. So I was there, it looked totally different.
We can add that in, certainly.
Great, thank you.
Any more comments?
I just have kind of a procedural question. So I'm seeing something like over a hundred pages. Do we have a goal for tonight?
Yeah, I would say if it were covered twenty last time, let's cover maybe another twenty today, and call it a night, because it's just going to be impossible to go through.
Okay, and last time, we were, we were allowed to essentially skim read, and then move on to the next page, and, you know, given a few moments by Chair Wong to look at each page, to see if there was something that we needed to comment on. I know there's some sections that I think we can really buzz through pretty quickly. And, you know, perhaps Valco, because the City Council's already gone through it pretty thoroughly, we don't necessarily need to speak about it very much, don't know.
Process question, should we get public comments first?
Vice Chair Cecina, if I ask you to get close to the mic so we can record your speech, please.
So should we get the public comments first before we go into the deep dive?
I, I would, I would suggest you, similar to last, last time, you, you kind of go through it, just like Commissioner Moore outlined, and then at a certain point, you can pause and allow for a public comment.
All right. So we're going to start from page nineteen, right? Or twenty-three?
I'm, I'm sorry, it's really hard to tell what page number, but it is policy num, or LU dash nineteen point one.
Nineteen, so that's twenty-three, yeah. Okay, so we're gonna start with ninety, twenty-three point one, oh, sorry, nineteen point one, and I think, Commissioner Moore, do you have any more follow-up questions on that?
It's my opinion that the City Council already handled the issue for adding objective standards to Valco pretty thoroughly, and I, I don't know that there's anything that, that I have to add here.
Commissioner Takahashi, all right, so we could move on to the next page, thank you.
Move on to the next section, I mean, next policy.
Yes, okay, thank you. Okay, so North Valco Part Special Area, from twenty point one to twenty point six, let's focus on those.
Just to be clear, this is the area that has the Kimco Hotel in it?
Correct.
Okay, and this, so I'm looking at policy LU twenty point three, it looks to me as though this, this does include the hotel area, so there's nothing that needs to be changed with regards to having made that alteration?
Correct, there are no changes needed here.
Okay, so we're good.
Any more comments, any other commissioners?
What, what was that, what was that last comment, in twenty point three? What, what was the issue there?
Simply that it mentions hotel, we have a hotel, we're all good. There's no, no comment on it. But may, perhaps on this, the last statement, policy LU twenty point six, the neighborhood buffers provide building transition setbacks and/or landscaping to buffer development. Are there any, you know, objective standards with regards to the transitions and setbacks?
So the only parcel that is probably developable, that a but single-family residential is the Cupertino Village Shopping Center itself. And there are no, there is a street that separates the single-family residential from the Cupertino Village Shopping Center, which is about sixty feet, fifty feet wide, or sixty feet wide at that point. And so there are no adopted standards for any setbacks from that particular street, it is planned development. As part of design guidelines, you know, the city, because to the extent that a development is discretionary, we would apply those standards. For example, there was a parking garage built there, but it was limited in height because of, you know, negotiations with the neighbors and the opposition that they had to that particular development. But for any streamlined projects, there is no set standard for that particular facade along Lynette Lane.
Okay, but they, they did just make, the City Council just made some changes for the P zones, right?
Correct, to the extent, well, it would depend on what kind of a development comes in for that shopping center, as far as residential developments go. So there would be R three standards, which would be applicable if there was multifamily attached, and I, I'm not sure what directly would be applicable to that particular site, but we would have to look to review and see. There are certain side setbacks, but we'd have to look, and I'd have to figure out what that might be.
And with regards to the road, you're referring to the one that adjacent to Good Samaritan?
The church, yes, it's Lynette Lane.
Okay, okay. So that, that would have a roadway easement, then, most likely?
Lynette Lane is a public street.
Public, okay, so, okay, good, thank you.
Are there, perhaps I did notice, are there single-family homes in that area?
They're in Sunnyvale, they're not in Cupertino, but they are single-family homes across the street from Lynette. Lynette Lane separates the shopping center from the single-family homes.
Okay, so, well, yes, with regard to Cupertino, there's not, there's no, this doesn't apply to anything, then?
No.
Yes.
All right, so if there are no discussions here, we'll move on to LU twenty-one? Okay, cool, so let's spend a few minutes going through that.
Do you have the map handy for us? And I, I think there was some issue with this North Deansa special area, where some of it has some objective standards, perhaps, and some does not, I'm not sure.
So this purple area up here is the North Deansa Boulevard Special Area, right here.
All right, thanks. You could move the focus back to the...
So was there any part of North Deansa which had already been given some objective standards? Or maybe I'm thinking of a different area, but I, would you know?
So the, the city does have an adopted North Deansa conceptual plan area in, on the west side of Deansa, which does not encompass this east side of Deansa. With regard to the west side, there are certain setback standards, whether they're landscaping setback standards, or some setback standard for resident, from residential development that apply to everything that kind of abuts on the western boundary of that special conceptual plan area. However, there are, and in addition to that, there is a landscape easement that impacts the frontage along Deansa as well, and the side streets, which are Mariani, Greenleaf, et cetera. So along the Deansa frontage, on, you have to have an average landscape easement of about fifty feet, and on the Mariani and Greenleaf, there is a different setback standard, I believe it's thirty or thirty-five feet, that, that go on the side streets. However, those do not apply to anything on the east side. However, existing development right now already has a pretty generous landscape setback because of the city's ability to have discretionary review along, for those projects in the past as well. So, and in addition, there are no setback, landscape setback, or other standards that apply to the eastern boundary of that special area, where it abuts residential development as there, neighborhood development there as well.
Okay, could you point out where the Apple, the former headquarters is in this area? Right, okay, thank you.
Thank you, we could move back to the other view. Any more comments on twenty-one point three? You could scroll down a bit. Okay, so twenty point two to twenty-one point six? Okay, so let's move on to South Deansa. So we were not plan, expecting any changes in this one, is that's correct?
May we see the map again?
Just for clarification, there are two portions to South Deansa, there is one up here, and then there is a smaller portion down by eighty-five.
Anybody know the history of that city boundary?
Oh, the San Jose?
Yeah, the San Jose incursion on the west side of Deansa.
They did not want to give up the commercial areas, that's the bottom line of it.
That's where the Home Depot's in San Jose.
Yeah.
Yes.
Kind of curious that you've got two, they're kind of not contiguous.
Right.
And, and I consider the, the part that's, you know, adjacent to Saratoga to be, you know, a little bit different than the, the other portion, and do you feel that the, that the policies and the strategies that we have for that work for both areas together, or do you think it should be broken, broken in half, and, and maybe something different for the, the portion that's adjacent to Saratoga?
In general, I think these, these are policies, and they, they apply equally to both of those areas. There are conceptual zoning plans for both of those areas, which are separate. So there is one called the South Deansa Conceptual Plan, and then there's the other one, which is called the Saratoga Sunnyvale Conceptual Plan. So there are specifics in each of those. I think in one, for example, in the South Deansa specific conceptual zoning plan, it, it encourages more commercial and office uses over there, versus in the Saratoga Sunnyvale, it, it, it's subtly different, but in general, the form and other things are, are pretty similar, in terms of the frontage improvements, the landscape improvements, and setbacks from the residential neighborhoods behind it.
Well, this, this was something that, that I believe we brought up in, in some, some of the earlier meetings we had about the, the general plan, and that was whether or not we really needed to, at some point, look at these other plans, like the, the South Deansa area, and, you know, maybe that's something that's, should be on the agenda to, to look at in the future.
I mean, I personally think that the southern part, which is south or of eighty-five, and the one which is near Stevens Creek are pretty, quite different in their character. And I would under, I need to know why we don't split them a bit more than what we talked about here. Like, they're pretty much different areas in terms of how they look, feel, and the character of the, the neighborhoods around it.
I, I think this is, the general plan is more forward-looking than what the, the current, what those areas currently look like. If Yashi, if you think about the way that Sar, San Jose is redeveloping along that southern portion of Deansa, one would be pretty surprised, there are actually new buildings going up now, there's one building that's slated for destruction, demolition fairly soon. And so it's gonna be very different on that San Jose side, not that we need to look like San Jose, but in terms of the general plan policies, certainly, if the Planning Commission believes that there needs to be a look and feel that's different, it could, you know, recommend that as part of their, you know, work program items for council to consider. At this point, you know, they're kind of clubbed, because the broad policies that apply to both those areas are, are very similar in terms of, you know, transitions from the neighborhoods, in terms of interconnectedness of the properties. So, so there's a lot, you know, there's encouraging parcel assembly, because not all the parcels are very large, particularly ones that are along the north side of Deansa, they're, they're very, they're fifty-foot wide parcels even, in that stretch. So, and you're right that they are very different, so, which is why you have the two conceptual zoning plans as well, which kind of have more particulars than the general plan does.
Thank you.
I think, considering that, that Saratoga now is looking at an SB thirty-five plan that is, is being claimed there, that I think we probably need to...
Do you know where specifically? Do you know where specifically that is?
There's a shopping center.
Kino Village.
Kino Village, okay.
So way on the other side.
Yeah, same developer. So I think that we probably need to circle back to this area that's adjacent to Saratoga in particular. And I think our neighbors might appreciate it, Saratoga, that if we, if we look into that and see what kind of exposure we have since the developers are using these, these new laws and to see if we have enough, enough objective standards, you know.
Certainly.
Any more comments? Any more comments?
My only comment is, to be forward-looking, you know, that the other side, the San Jose side of the street is Horizon Three Urban Village, South Deansa Urban Village. So, you know, it's worth looking at that.
To say Horizon Three makes it sound like it could be something in the distance, but they can move that anytime and they've been doing that. So I...
They can approve, they can approve projects.
Right.
As, you know, signature projects before that, but, you know. The city of San Jose has, has specific things about how they get from Horizon One, Horizon Two, Horizon Three, so.
Yeah, right, but I wouldn't be complacent and assume that it's going to be something off in the distance the way things have been going. They can make a choice and change and speed it along if they want to. I don't know if there's any more comments on the South Deansa Special Area though.
So let's move on to the Homestead Special Area, LU twenty-three.
I jumped to the map, but I just wanted to point out the Homestead Special Area spans everything that's here, in essence.
Thank you.
So is there a master plan or anything for this? Because again, we're looking at this, you know, policy LU twenty-three point five, neighborhood buffers, provide building transition setbacks and/or landscaping to buffer development. Are there any objective standards already set for that?
No, this is part of what staff has recommended as part of the objective standards discussion previously to come up with design guidelines and other stuff for development in, citywide, in essence, to consider that.
So it looks like building transitions and setbacks is kind of a huge issue. And so is the idea that we are going to come up with what those transitions are? Like, you know, it's a one-to-one, starting, you know, at a twenty-foot setback, something like that?
I don't think it's a huge issue. I think it is an issue in certain places. Like I said, we do have conceptual zoning plans and other documents that do address setbacks and buffers and things like that in many places. It addresses it in Heart of the City, which is much of Stevens Creek. It's addressed in North Deansa, the conceptual zoning plan. While it covers certain portions, the eastern side does, it does not. So the real issues are really just that eastern portion on, that abuts the current, not the current, but the former Apple Headquarters. And it might also impact the Homestead Special Area. But the other areas that abut, commercial areas where you could have multifamily developments, there are set objective standards in place within the conceptual zoning plans.
Okay, so would you be able to come back with some suggestions for the east side of the North Deansa area?
That is the, that is part of the Phase One project where to amend the North Deansa Conceptual Plan to incorporate the eastern side. That is part of staff's recommendation to council to do, make those amendments, quite possibly be consistent with what is already adopted on the western side and so that there are similar transitions. And for the Homestead areas, again, there is really, I'm trying to think, maybe a handful of properties that could be redeveloped, one being the Homestead Square Shopping Center, which is the largest area. And the other is the Homestead Lanes Bowling Alley, that particular parcel. The Homestead Lanes Bowling Alley abuts multifamily, other multifamily development in any case. And the, the Homestead Square Shopping Center abuts a condominium complex, but it does have surface parking that surrounds that condominium complex. So there is a little bit of a buffer already. So, and it's also separated from the other, there is Franco Lane that separates, Franco Court that separates an existing apartment complex from the shopping center. So the, the concerns with not having that immediately right now is not immense. And as we've amended the plan development ordinance, there are certain standards that could potentially be applied as well, in addition.
Okay, so I'd like there to be something in this table which is letting us know, just, you know, like flagging the North Deansa area that it intended to have, you know, make it, make it, you know, red in some area here, maybe at the first, the first row. And, you know, to state that we're going to be looking into putting the standards on the east side of that property, just as a reminder that that's going to be looked at. And also, these two areas, Homestead Square and where the lanes are, it looks like both of those need to be addressed in the comments section, so that we don't forget it.
Actually, I had a question about that. The Homestead Lane site was actually designated as Scenario B Housing Element with a pretty intense, in a pretty intense level of development. So I'm curious, the, one of the items here, it's, great, twenty-three point four. The gateway, you know, gateway plans for, for the two areas. Actually, I guess, I guess the hotel, the Deansa Hotel is in the, the Homestead Square gateway. So I'm surprised that there's not a, that that's not a higher priority to identify a gateway, a gateway concept or gateway plan there. You know, specific plan.
The gateway concept is, I'm sorry, I am not understanding what, what your, I mean, what the question is exactly. When you say gateway concept...
I guess those are P-zone now, right? I don't know if Homestead Lanes is a P-zone or not, but, probably is.
It is a P-zone.
Yeah, so I don't know whether that, you know, maybe the gateway concept as opposed to a specific plan. I'm just curious, what, you know, that seems to be a low priority, even though there's, there's a mix of different kinds of things happening in that, in that space. You know, the condos, I think they're condos. Well, as Prometheus said, those are apartments, I guess.
Those are apartments, the Villacerra.
The apartments are quite different than the, than the, you know, than the Homestead Square area. So I just, I just noted that, you know, that this was an interesting one because that actually, you know, was on the list of, you know, of areas for redevelopment and consideration of redevelopment. And it didn't have, there wasn't more of a framework happening there.
Right, that was an alternative site. So the council would have to pull the trigger in order to make it a housing element site. And again, I mean, to the extent that, you know, staff is recommending that we come up with some sort of design guidelines document that would be applicable by proposed housing type, so that there are objective standards surrounding that development. And we continue to do that.
Yeah, I would just say that three years from now, three years from now, you'll have an arena and a new housing element. And, you know, Homestead might be, Homestead was not a very highly ranked alternative in the, you know, in twenty-fourteen. But it's, it's interesting to say, you know, at this point, a couple of years out, you know, two or three years out, to give some consideration about, well, what, what is the longer-term intention there? Because I think that that will, you know, come up again.
Thank you for changing the color on Policy twenty-three point one. I was hoping that in the comment, we can add the Homestead Square and Homestead Lanes so that council and we can keep track that we need to look at those two areas specifically.
Any more comments on LU twenty-three? Okay, so we can probably move on to twenty-four, Bub Road area. Probably scroll up a little bit so that we include the last line from the previous. Yeah, thank you.
There was something in the economic development plan about Bub Road and a innovation area. Is that, is that still in existence? And does that need to be incorporated here in these policies?
There, that is still under development and has not been adopted by council yet. While the EDSP has been adopted and identif, you know, it identifies Bub Road as an innovation area, those policy changes have not come about, council has not adopted any changes to the general plan policies with regard to that, or even adopted a policy about an innovation area. Those are still under development.
Oh, but could you show it on the map?
Of course. So it's this gray area right here.
Thank you.
And there was some discussion at one point about considering housing in this area. And I, I think this might have been at city council, I'm not sure. But the concern was that they would lose a, the industrial area if they were to do that. Have you, do you have any history about that?
The Bub Road area, okay. The city has, about five percent of the city's land is zoned for industrial purposes, which is fairly low. Those buildings are coveted by people that want, you know, that need tilt-ups for the type of business that they are because they can redo the interiors fairly easily. And so losing that area to any other form of development would mean that, it would be a loss to the city in terms of several different kinds of businesses. And so with that said, you know, having housing in that area, you know, there is a housing crisis. You know, certainly if the council and the community wishes to see residential development there, the city could look to evaluate, evaluate its policies with regard to that. But right now, I believe the zoning for that area does not allow for residential uses because of the industrial nature that is typically, you know, in the past happened on that, on those parcels.
Any more questions? Or we can move on to the Monta Vista Village, twenty-five. Scroll along, please, and show it on the map.
So Monta Vista Village is sort of this area here.
Does it include the post office and the new Starbucks?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just out of curiosity, when the new Starbucks came in, did you get any comments about that? The one next to the post office, either positive or negative?
We got both. There were positive comments from people that like Starbucks. There were definitely concerns from neighbors and community members that lost the, the existing businesses that were there. Right, there was a shoe repair and a pizza, V...
Yeah, VV's.
VV's, yeah, so we got both.
And what about the, the size of the building? Did you get some comments about that?
To my recollection, not, I mean, the building complied completely with the zoning. There were no exceptions. There were nothing that they did not comply with.
Do you know the height limit in that area?
Monta Vista, per the general plan, it's thirty feet.
Is any of that area planned development?
All of it, pretty much all of it is.
Oh, okay.
Except for certain, single-family residential portions where the Monta Vista neighborhood is. Almost all of it is planned development.
All right, thank you.
There was rumor, boy, this is probably four years ago, about the post office and potential closure of that post office. Any...
We haven't heard anything.
Just curious.
All right.
We didn't hear that.
So where are they going to move the post office to? So about the semi-rural appearance part of it, the four point two, I just wanted a clarification on how do the, like, how are streets defined as safe routes and the ones which don't need to have sidewalks? Because pretty much this abuts the, like, the trifecta of all the three schools, so...
So neighbors themselves could come in and designate themselves as semi-rural. I believe there's a threshold, like, within a block of how many people sign on to a petition to want that semi-rural designation. And based on that, the city council designates those areas as semi-rural. There are several in that area already. People just simply didn't want to put the improvements in. They're, you know, not inexpensive. There are also some people that like that look and feel. And so they, that's why the council allowed people that ability. Of course, properties have changed over time and, you know, there are new property owners that might have different thoughts about that matter. However, the council also designates safe routes to school and that trumps the semi-rural designation.
I think to me, that was the most important part, that it should not stop the safe routes program.
Correct.
Any more questions?
So with regard to the sidewalks in that area, still improvements based on permits and people wanting to make improvements, driving a sidewalk improvement.
So actually, fairly recently, in the last couple of years, I believe the Public Works Department has been going out and implementing the safe routes to school. So they are working with property owners that are not making improvements to acquire that property and put the improvements in so that the safe routes to school can be implemented.
That's good.
Yeah, there's actually a significant section of the...
Orange?
Yeah, up to Orange, where there was actually, you know, normally the policy would be if you, if you went for a building permit to improve your home, that you would have to install the sidewalk.
Right.
But in a number of cases there, they, actually, the city has paid for those sidewalks as part of that.
Right.
The, the challenge is the place where it stops is, right across from Monta Vista, is one of the areas where there's been a lot of opposition. And that just, it's not surprising. There are people who have their landscaping is done a certain way and, you know, it can't be that way with a sidewalk.
How about, totally off topic, but how about McClellan Road?
The section between...
The tree.
Yeah, the tree, the famous tree. It's not as bad as the tree on Orange. It's just literally standing out of the tree.
I mean, that dates back to Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission. And why can't, why can't the city address that section where McClellan necks down dangerously for cyclists and, so, anyway.
That one actually, that one has a problem because of parking, street parking. Removal street parking was an issue there as well.
Cool, let's move on to LU twenty-six. Could you mark this? Or like, is it all over the city or...
So, let me think about this. So there are certain portions of the city that are mixed-use sites, but they don't fall within a special area. For example, there is Tintin Market, which is down by Blaney and Bolinger. There is also the Battey Brothers Properties at the corner of Flotail and Stevens Creek. There is Flotail Market at the, at the tail end of McClellan. There is also, there's a small, the Seven Eleven by the schools in Monta Vista. So there are a number that are kind of sprinkled all over the place. I believe, I think it's also this, this market at, in that area over there.
Thank you.
And so these are all considered other mixed-use commercial areas. And so, these are all considered other mixed-use commercial areas. And they all have a lower density in terms of residential development capacity. They're, they're designated to have fifteen dwelling units to the acre on those sites. And so there are certain policies that are, that apply to those sites.
Fifteen per acre?
I'm sorry?
One five.
Fifteen, yes.
I had heard something about the Batey site. Is that, is it for sale or is it closed or what's, what's going on with that?
I am not sure whether the sale has closed or not, but the business certainly is going out, is going out of business because he is selling his stock of everything.
Yeah, I think I've heard that the city of Los Altos had bought it, something like that. I don't know, that might be just a rumor.
I think the director has something to add.
We, we, we don't have any more information at this point regarding the status of the property.
So what objective standards do we have for that? Is it, and is it a P-zone?
It is a P-zone. In terms of what objective standards we have for that, it would depend. The obje-, the planned development zoning district allows two methods for the property owner to proceed with development. Either they can apply for streamlined development or, in which case, the P-zone identifies what standards are applicable. Or as an alternative, they can apply for different standards under our normal discretionary processes to apply for different standards from the standards that are spelled out in the P-zoning district.
Are the streamlining standards those which would take the most restrictive of the, of the, what's, the P-zone encompasses? You know, if it was residential and, and commercial?
It, it basically, I think the P-zone zoning standards essentially say that if you're proposing a multifamily development, then you have to meet the R-three zoning standards. And that's what it says. It, it, really, those are the basic standards that apply in P-zones. And then if you, as a property owner or an applicant, wish to propose alternative standards than the ones that are allowed in the P-zoning district, then you can apply to the city to do that. And that's a, that's a wholly up-to-the-city kind of process.
Alright.
May we highlight this and mention in the comments the Batey site? So that the city council is aware of what the standards are and that this project is probably going to be moving forward at some point?
Sure.
Any more questions on this? Cool, so let's move on to LU twenty-seven. This is neighborhoods, big one.
My concern is that SB fifty is back. And I'm, I'm wondering if there's anything that we should add to our neighborhood policies and strategies in order to address that. And I think that, that might require some, perhaps some city council direction. So I, I mean, I would consider highlighting just neighborhoods and, and, you know, look at pending legislation for ideas for what objective standards might need to be added.
So that's a note, that's a note you want the staff to take?
Yes, if we could also, you know, highlight neighborhoods and in the comments, you know, look at pending legislation, SB fifty, for example.
Thank you.
Also, you know, the last time I looked at SB fifty, so I, I do live in the, in the Fair Grove-Eichler neighborhood. It's not a protected neighborhood, even though we have design guidelines. From what I, from what I read, my understanding is that you could put in a, a multi-story fourplex in that neighborhood and not follow the design guidelines. And that would be acceptable, as far as I understand, to SB fifty. So I would like to have that clarified.
Just for, from staff's part, the Fair Grove neighborhood does allow two-story homes, right? So.
Uh, yes, yes, they do, yeah.
You know, I'll just, I'll just highlight, we've had discussions here before about park distribution. So twenty-seven point nine is actually the comment on that. Right now, the, the notation, you know, does, does refer to the Parks Master Plan, which I think is fine. But the definition of equitable and how that's measured, that, that probably, I think that's something that's worthy of, of looking at to try to make an, you know, to understand as opposed to a, right now, there's just kind of a very vague, vague description of what, you know, you know, of how the balance works. So, uh, that particular, in particular, the discussions have, have kind of come in the face, a little bit in the face of some of the other elements that would actually be in the Parks Master Plan, or the, the parks element, park and open space element, where they're, you know, where you wanna take advantage of the opportunities when they arise. So, you know, I think there's some reconciliation. Would be valuable to have there, just as a comment.
Going back one policy to LU twenty-seven point eight, protection. Protect residential neighborhoods from noise, traffic, light, glare, odors, and visually intrusive effects from more intense development with landscape buffers, site and building design setbacks, and other appropriate measures. While this, this perhaps sounds like it could be an objective standard when you consider SB thirty-five and, and what was brought forward as a project with seven towers between twenty-two and twenty-four stories. It, it, it seems as though this is not objective any longer. So how can we make this an objective standard? So that a twenty-two to twenty-four story tower would, would not be allowed to be built adjacent to a single-story, a single-family residential neighborhood? No, seriously, like, how could you? I mean, to me, it seems patently obvious that, that you can't put that kind of a tower next to a single-family residential neighborhood. That, that you're not following this policy. And, and yet, it's not considered an objective standard. So, you know, where, where is the cutoff?
So the, I mean, the city has height standards in, in the entire city, which, you know. And there are transitions, particularly, like I said, particularly along most of where our neighborhoods about mixed-use developments. To the extent that state law allows waivers and other considerations, concessions for heights and other stuff. You know, the city has no control over those. But we would certainly continue to implement our transition standards that we have.
Okay, with regards to the concessions and waivers, I do have a question about that. And I think it needs more research. Because I was told by an attorney that you're only allowed to add as much height as needed to encompass the actual density bonus units. So if you were adding six density bonus units, you can't claim that you were going to have, you know, ten, a ten, ten stories added in, in a tower form in order to encompass that. So I'd, I'd like to see that researched and I, and I still, I know we talked about density bonus previously. I think we need to have a, a study session on this. And, and again, look at what other cities are doing. Santa Rosa had their white paper where they reviewed a whole slew of different cities' policies. And looking at what Berkeley's done for their interpretation. And I think it would actually go into the necessity to, to look at different cases on this. The case law, any lawsuits that have happened over the density bonus law to get a real thorough investigation into how the density bonus law has been implemented. So, you know, there, there might actually be some constraints on, on waivers and concessions that we are not looking at very thoroughly.
So we do have that as a, in the attachment that I discussed, attachment two, that is already been captured as something the planning commission wishes to look at. And I will defer to the city attorney on any other density bonus issues, questions.
Uh, yeah, the question's noted. We've, the attorney's office has done quite a bit of research on this topic. I don't know what your specific questions are, but you're, you're, you're more like, less correct that the, the concession requirement is that typically that the developer has the burden of showing that the, the bonus is economically necessary. And often, often that, that showing can be made. You referred to the white paper from Santa Rosa. I think one of the methods that was talked about there was something that they call maybe pre-approved concessions. That it, that, based on our research, those, those do not actually limit, let's say impose a hard limit on what can be requested. Because of course, you could in theory request a concession or a waiver from the pre-approved concession. So really what it does is it nudges developers toward particular concessions so that they don't have to show, to meet the, you know, make the economic feasibility showing. But, but you can't, our finding is that you cannot preset concessions such that they can never ask something exceeding that.
I would, I would just comment on this one. In this, in this particular case, the, the magnitude of the density bonus is six hundred units of housing. So that would, in, in any circumstance would be a large, you know, pretty large thing. Understood that, that there still needs to be, you know, there's a, there's a pro forma that's provided to demonstrate that that, you know, improves feasibility and, and it's limited to that. But, you know, I don't know. You know, I don't know that the general plan can protect you against, against a large development, especially when that development is subject, gonna be subject to a specific plan. So, you know, the, you know, that's when, that's when that time, when, when that's considered, when the issue of buffers are considered. And that, and that in fact was something that was considered in the Valco specific plan.
Cool, can we move on? Or are we done with LU twenty-seven? Any more comments on this?
Well, I, I think that when we, when we get to our discussion on, on density bonus and, and concessions and waivers, and hopefully it is before we are presented with a project that is taking concessions and waivers, that we need to, to look at, you know, whether or not having, you know, ten to fifteen floors of tower that is, you know, seventy feet by seventy feet is the configuration that the, the law anticipated. And assuming that it would be economically feasible, I, I, you know, it's, it's questionable at best. Yes, we can move on.
So let's move on to twenty-eight. This is a small one. Any questions on this? Or there are like three small neighborhoods, Inspiration, Oak Valley, and Fair Grove. Uh, that's Inspiration, Oak Valley, and Fair Grove. Commissioner Moore, any comments on those? Commissioner Takahashi? We could probably move on to the next ones, next sections after that. Availability of housing, HE one-point-one.
But this does get into the question of the ADUs and the, the short-term rental issue. So if, if we are adding, we are now adding ADUs and I'm gonna assume junior ADUs. Does a junior ADU count towards our RENA numbers or is it just an ADU?
I believe you can count your junior ADUs towards your RENA, but if I recall correctly. But our definition, we are looking to update our definitions of what an ADU is. And one of the things that we are considering doing is adding, a junior ADU would be a subset of ADUs. So if, if SDRs would be prohibited in ADUs, then they would be prohibited in junior ADUs as well.
Okay, so our HCD numbers are going to reflect the four hundred ADUs that they mentioned?
No, they mentioned four hundred SDRs.
SDRs, okay, okay. How many ADUs do we have? Sorry.
I don't know off the top of my head. I mean, in the last few years, we've, we've approved maybe sixty-some-odd, seventy, eighty-us, let's say, give or take.
So that has been reflected in our RENA numbers? Okay. And I know I'd asked for this previously. So at the start of this table, if we could have the HCD, the documents which were, were turned in, if we could add that to the beginning. And then the public will know how we're doing with these numbers. And I think it'll help with regards to, you know, the housing laws and what, what we're being subjected to because of not meeting certain numbers. And, and also having some explanation about permits versus approved application. Because I think there's some confusion because, you know, we've been approving these things and, and they're not pulling the permits to build them. And that's frustrating. And I think some outreach to the public where they understand that what's happening there would, would help.
It is my understanding that there will be a presentation from the housing manager with regard to the forms that will be submitted to the HCD. And so all those numbers, we haven't submitted anything to HCD yet, to my knowledge. And so those will all be coming through the planning commission onto the city council.
You, you submitted for April of twenty nineteen. So you're, we're gearing up to do the next, the next submitted.
Yes, yes.
So just from a clarification standpoint, you know, the, the RENA is quite clear on what's being counted. So I don't, I don't think there's any, there should be any objection to the difference between entitlement. That's actually something that's reported is entitlement versus, versus permit. But, you know, that's one of, one part of the new forms. But, you know, from a compliance standpoint, you know, you're, you look only at permits, not, not entitlements.
Correct, they're building permits issued.
Yep.
Okay, purely from a process point of view, we will stop at two-point-three-nine. That's probably gets us to our twenty-plus pages today.
What number are we at?
We are on HE one-point-three. So we'll stop at HE two-point-three-nine.
I think, I think you go into twenty-page limit, you would hit the end of strategy HE two-point-three-point-two. Twenty pages from the last time.
Okay, so maybe, okay, so two-point-three-point-two is where we stop.
Yeah, actually, in one-point, HE one-point-three-point-two, you do have that fifty-nine ADU count. This happens to be in the comment.
You wanna scroll down a bit more?
Just, just to be clear, for strategy HE one-point-three-point-one, availability of housing, for Valco Shopping District, a specific plan will be required to implement a comprehensive strategy. So to my knowledge, we have two routes. They could do a specific plan or they, the developer could use the allocation numbers and the, the new objective standards which city council implemented. Do I understand that correctly?
Correct. This is, this is the housing element portion. And what was amended was the land use portion of the, of the general plan. So we're, we're compliant with our housing element and housing element law.
And also this, strategy HE one-point-three-point-one, it, it shows the minimum, the twenty units per acre. But it's not, I, I don't know if I'm missing it, but the thirty-five, I'm not seeing. And I don't know if you want to-
That is in, it's established in the land use documents.
On the map. Okay, and then I, I know that I had really, you know, talked about that land use map and wanting to see that in the online general plan, so I-
It, it is.
It's still, okay. Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, the, the twenty number, I think, comes from the, they come from the RENA that you needed to have a certain minimum density to comply.
Right.
And this applies across the city.
Yeah, housing element law says that you have to identify sites at a certain minimum density in order for them to count as affordable. And for our areas, that's twenty dwelling units per acre. per acre.
I was wondering, so you did mention Commissioner Feng, for availability of house, availability of housing, HE 1.3.2, having the 59 ADUs, that's through the end of 2018, if it's possible that we can have the 2019 numbers?
Yep.
That'd be great. Thank you.
I'll just comment in support of the HE 1.3.5. You know, I've talked about this before over the past few years, you know, it may not be a massive change, but I think that's a positive thing.
Could you scroll now?
Was there any recommendation with regards to strategy HE 2.3.2 by city council? I know we looked at the feasibility of going from 15% BMR to, to 20%, and it, and it looked as though they could do that. The economic feasibility looked like it, it worked, and I was just wondering if you would happen to know if city council approved increasing it to 20, or, or did it remain at 15?
City council provided a direction for staff, so we'll continue our study in the second round, and we're looking to bring it back to city council for another round of discussions. So not yet.
They, but, but they're looking at it positively to go, moving up to 20?
Still part of the study, but yes, that's, that's one of the goals, but our studies don't necessarily show at the moment whether that's supportive or not, so...
Thank you.
I was just going to say this will take us to our 20-page limit, and unless you have any more comments and questions, we could open up to public comment.
Okay, thank you Ben. I have, I'm opening the floor for public comments now. We have two blue cards here, I'll call Jennifer Griffin first.
Welcome back. Good evening, Planning Commission. I was actually texting a couple of people tonight from hearing about the Beta Brothers property selling. We had noticed that there was a demolition fence around it, and we knew that it was up on City Loop, or whatever that Loop thing is, for sale, but I guess Los Altos bought it?
I, I think this is all hearsay.
Anyway, the other thing was the part, I didn't know about the Kito 35, but I'm not surprised. I'm going to start off with, I am extremely disappointed that our Eichlers are not going to be protected. Anyone that is rolling out housing bills at the state level needs, especially the author of 50 and 35 is from San Francisco, or purports to be. That means that the Seven Sisters, those famous Victorians by the park, could be torn down, and having duplexes and triplexes. Winchester Mystery House could be torn down. There is, when you have people that are writing these laws that have no respect for the history of each of the cities, and why people have fought in Sunnyvale, I went to Homestead, I know where those Eichlers are. Joe Eichler was a very famous local architect, and to not respect the history of our neighborhoods is as gross a violation against state rights as not providing housing for people. That means that they're going to plow under our local history. There are people right now fighting to keep the Sunnyvale Historical Apricot Orchard. Okay, these are local battles, but they're our battles, and I will not allow anyone from the state level to override anything that allows them to take down and destroy our neighborhoods. This is an all-out fight, okay? Weiner is up there in Oakland, and I think a lot of people think that he's the governor. I honest to God do. He is pushing 50 for the third time, and he will try to do it for the fourth time. Gut and amend. So where is the money coming from to push this stream of filth? And it is, these are elected senators that are doing things like this, but I cannot condone destroying local architecture. That is a gross, are we going to take down the Missions because people now have problems with them? It is history, and Joe Eichler built homes for everyone. Okay, let's talk about Valco. Do you realize now that because we can have ADUs in apartments, they could have 4,500 additional ADUs and JADUs because of the blasted law? I, you know, hey, we have drawn our line in the sand, and no one is going to destroy the Eichler neighborhoods. Scott Weiner should not be micromanaging Sunnyvale and Los, and Cupertino. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Next, we have Lisa Warren.
So I was going to ask about a couple of different properties that I'm not sure I caught when you were just circling the map. The United Furniture property, where is, oh, I guess I can't ask you questions. I'd like to know what that's on, and if there are buffers built into that, because that is adjacent, pretty, in my opinion, it's adjacent to neighborhood, single-family home. And it is for sale. And I don't think it's heart of the city, but maybe it is. And then there was also the question about the XVVs and shoe repair Starbucks, that property, that's adjacent to a single-family neighborhood as well, and I don't, you said 30 feet right now, but I'm just thinking in my head and just bringing it up for the record, in case somebody has questions up there, they can ask questions. Fair Grove, that's been talked about, and I wondered about this historical designation. And the property across the street, the strip mall, so to speak, across the street from the post office, that's adjacent to single-family. I don't know where that was on the map, and if that buffer was built in, and anything else was, needs to be asked and answered. That's it.
Thank you. We, if there are any more questions, any more, we can now move on to the conclusion of this study session.
May I, to address what Lisa spoke about, United Furniture, what area is that in?
Heart of the city.
It is heart of the city, okay.
Any more questions, comments for the staff, or...
The la, the last one was across from the post office, that, I think, was in that area we looked at previously.
Montevista, there are Montevista Design Guidelines with setbacks and such, they're like five feet from the property line, and in certain cases, no setbacks are allowed also.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Takahashi? All right, so we will then conclude this study session and move on to the last item, the staff and commission reports.
I just have one real quick, report your annual League of the Cities Planning Commissioners Academy is coming up, March 4th, 5th, and 6th, so more information is in your inbox, so check your inbox for information, and the space is limited, so I recommend you register ASAP if you're interested.
Where is it at this year?
Sacramento.
Thank you.
And of course, reach out to me if you have any questions, happy to talk to you.
Thank you. Now we have the commission reports.
I only have one meeting to comment on. I attended the Housing Commission meeting last week, they spoke about homelessness, and had a presentation on that, that will be coming to city council, I believe, and they did talk about the ADUs, and that will be coming to us in a few weeks. But the homelessness issue, they had a really great presentation, they had a representative from Danza College, and the county, and from West Valley Community Services there. Thank you.
Commissioner Feng?
Surprisingly, I, other than, other than attending some of the change of council and mayor in some of the other cities, I don't actually, I didn't do any activities related to planning commission.
Busy.
I don't have anything to talk about. Commissioner Takahashi? Okay. If there's nothing else to talk about, I will call for development for this meeting. All right. Thank you.